Okay, let's open the hearing with a roll call vote. I have my sheet set up with alphabetical roll call. We're going to go with Ray. Andrews?
Here.
Rush? Bashup? Hodgepuck? It's Rush?
He's not online.
Not? Okay. Peggy Briggs, I'm here. Kathy? You? Eric?
Yeah.
Thank you, Eric. John? Greg. I know Greg is going to be a little bit late, but he will be here soon. Amherst?
I'm here.
Thank you, Amherst. Dawn? Lindsay? Dee? Perishar is here, but must have stepped out of the room for a moment. Christine? Brian? And Lois?
Here.
Okay. So we have a quorum, and I so declare, and I hereby call to order the special town meeting public hearing for November 17th. This is a public hearing for the special town meeting, which will be held on January 19th for the purpose of discussing debt for the middle school building project and several other issues. The warrant was issued. Everybody hopefully received that in the mail. The two articles that we're discussing tonight are Articles Four and Five. Article Four has to do with the Community Preservation Act Fund Housing Fund Reserve. And Article Five has to do with voting to appropriate an additional 7.2 million for the middle school project. And here is Perishar. Perishar, just say here.
Oh, I'm here.
Thank you. I knew you were. Okay. First, first order of business, we're going to appoint a scribe. Dum, da dum dum. The people aren't here. Online. Not Lois, because she's our clerk, and she reviews them all and is working, I'm sure, very hard on the FinCom report. Any volunteers online? Okay. I am going to, Ray, Ray's almost ducking his head under. Look at him. Oh, my gosh. Okay.
Ray's working on another set of minutes, so it's not fair to.
I'll take it, Peggy. This is Eric.
How about you, Erica? You were next, next, because you're in the, from in here, you're on the upper left corner, you know? So that's the first seat. Okay, Eric will be the scribe.
I'll get here later next time.
What'd he say?
Never mind.
I know. Hey, now I know better. I come to the meetings. Okay. We do have an excellent agenda, although I would like to ask the members of the Finance Committee if they would be interested in swapping out, under each of the items, just switching public comment with FinCom discussion. And I'm only saying that because if we have good public comment, I think it will inform the FinCom discussion. And it's, you know, a little better way to go. Do people have a feeling about that? Agree? Agree? Agree, agree. Okay. So when we come to the, we come to those items, we will just switch and have public comment before Finance Committee. Now, just remembering that we have 15 members of the Finance Committee and many members of the public here tonight, which I really appreciate. We have Article Four, Article Five, and following that, we will be discussing the preliminary guidelines and get further updates. So we have a long night, and if you don't have something pressing and new to say, that's fine. However, this is the hearing. It's the hearing. So this is the night folks get to speak at length, not on a two-minute timeline like a town meeting. So just keep both of those thoughts in mind. We want to hear from you. Tonight's the night. And we can, no problem, we can stay here till one or two in the morning.
Speaking for yourself or the whole committee?
For the, well, we'd have to break for dinner, but for the whole committee. Okay. So with that, the warrant article number four, we're going to hear from the Preservation Act CPC.
Thank you. My name is Diane Proctor, and I'm the Chair of the CPC this year.
Thank you, Diane.
We're speaking to Article Number Four to determine whether the town will vote to rescind prior appropriations in the sum of $1,44,255.76 from the Community Preservation Fund appropriated at the 2015, 2017, 2018, and 2019 annual town meetings for the Junction Village Assisted Living Project, and to appropriate that amount to the Community Housing Reserve Fund in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44B, "to be appropriated for community housing projects or to take any other action relative thereto." This article proposes to rescind a total, as I said before, of $1,44,255.76 in community housing funds originally appropriated for the Junction Village Assisted Living Project. The project is not moving forward, which we all observed at the Select Board meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the funds therefore will not be used. To meet this appropriation, community housing funds will be transferred to the Community Housing Reserve Fund, which is overseen by the CPC, the Community Preservation Committee. Below see a breakdown of the funds being appropriated. Warrant Article Number 30, from April 12th to the 15th, 2015 Annual Town, and these were each voted by the Annual Town Meeting. Total 45,000, from which $744.24 was spent for planning and development work, leaving the following amount to be rescinded: $44,255.76. Then from warrant Article 30, from the April 24th, 27th, 2017 Annual Town Meeting, for $350,000. Then warrant Article 26, from the April 9th through 12th, 2018 Annual Meeting, for $350,000. And finally, from warrant Article Number 22, from the April 8th to the April 10th, 2019 Annual Town Meeting, for $300,000. The CPC has consistently supported and been concerned about the opportunities for affordable housing in our town. By moving these funds to the Community Housing Reserve Fund, we can then aggregate that money and hope to be able to then, at the regular town meeting, put a warrant forward to pass that money to the Concord Affordable Housing Trust Fund, where that money can be used. So, any questions?
Thank you, Diane. Any questions from the public? And now, let's just, we are only speaking about Article Four, Community Preservation Housing Reserve Fund. Thank you. Your name and address, please.
Trivani Upadia, 156 Caterina Heights. I'm not following the whole process, but I do know, I was in FinCom many, many years ago. And I remember when Junction Village was discussed, and how the Finance Committee felt about it, and how the money was appropriated. Now, I think Junction Village project is not happening, which is okay. That's not the point. The point is, the money should be gone back to, in my opinion, not to the CPC, but to the town, either the free cash or some other reserve fund. And the town, the Select Board, the FinCom should take a vote, not give the money to CPC, because then town has no control. Now CPC says they'll come and ask for a warrant, but that's not the right way to do it. It's the public money. You should go to the public fund and then appropriate at the right time when the new housing authority issue comes up. That's my suggestion. The money should go back to the town, and town should have full control of the money and not allocate to CPC right now.
Actually, we were required to do a two-step process, or first to move it to the Reserve Fund, and then to forward it for town funding.
Yeah, but I don't see a need to go to the CPC. There's no basis to take the money out from the town fund and put the CPC. I think it should stay with the town, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee. That's what we have done in the past, and then they should decide at the right time, when the new, any other project comes, which is, makes sense for the town, for the housing only, affordable housing, not to be used for any other fund. Yeah, I would like to put restriction. The town cannot use the money for anything other than the affordable housing. But still, the town should have the final say, not the CPC.
Well, actually.
Thank you. I think, I think that what we're doing here is, by putting the money back to CPC, that money can only be reallocated, if I'm not correct, Diane.
That's correct, Peggy.
The money can only be reallocated through a CPC warrant article, per usual, where they have the spreadsheet. So it gives the town full control over that money to be reallocated, whether it's, I mean, right now, there, it would stay in the affordable housing bucket, but the town would have control over the money. I mean, the town, meaning the voters, town meeting.
Okay. I have no issue about the CPC. My question is, and it's a fundamental issue, is the money belongs to CPC or the money belongs to town? Wherever the money came from, you should go back to that pool, then take it out when you need it, for the same purpose, which is affordable housing. But it's a process issue. I don't want to have the town money go to different pools of money, which town doesn't have full control over it. There's a suggestion, you know, we can take a vote.
You're making, you're making a very good point. I think allocating that money out of affordable housing would, could be problematic, because if you were on the Finance Committee, you would know that every year, you know, it's for CPC, it has to be allocated in buckets in certain amounts. So taking it all out of that amount, I think, would be problematic. I think keeping it in that amount, but pushing it back to the town meeting with the usual spreadsheet and an application from a new affordable housing sponsor is how it would work.
But did the money come from the CPC fund?
Yes.
Okay. Then I would go along with it. I'd still like to see.
I mean, that's, that's all we're doing, actually.
The money, yeah. What I'm saying is that, I mean, I've been there. I know, I remember when the Junction Village topic was discussed as affordable housing, and all the trauma we went through, how it was managed, and finally, why it failed. I just don't want to make a similar mistake. I want to make sure the town money is preserved and used for the right purpose. If the NF safeguards and the FinCom feels that way, I'm okay with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that comment, and that is also our intention. Thank you.
And Diane, did I mess anything up?
Of course. No, you didn't. You were perfect.
Christine?
Yeah, I have a question, Diane.
Okay.
So I understand this request, which is related to the CPC allocations to the project. There was also, I think, about $250,000 related to a park that was supposed to be part of Junction Village.
That's right, Chris.
So is that going to come back as well?
That will eventually come back. There are still some accounting concerns there as well, and we're working on that with the town right now. It ends up that that 200, what would the, the question that Christine is asking, I believe, is that we allocated last year $250,000 to the West Concord Village, people who were trying to enhance the West Concord Village group. And they put forward a very good project, and we awarded them $250,000 to help improve the site at Junction Village. However, that entire improvement depended upon two things. One, Junction Village being built. But perhaps more just tangibly important, they were going to be relying on the bulldozers and the various equipment that the Junction Village people were bringing along to help, to help fix that land up and make it available for the kind of work they wanted to do. So at the present moment, since there is no clear designated use for that land, we're going to rescind that $250,000, bring it back into the general fund. And then, we can't use it this year, but we can use it the year after that.
Okay, thank you. My second question is about, and Carrie, this one might be for you. We had $1 million that came out of free cash, and I know it didn't really go anywhere, I think, but will we have to, perhaps at annual town meetings, sort of bring that back? It must be tagged somewhere. Perhaps it's restricted? So at annual town. Could Carrie come to the microphone, because anyone who's online can't hear what she's saying?
Sorry, we still can't hear her.
Now? Okay. So that, that funding will remain with that warrant article until town meeting takes action to transfer it somewhere else. But would you expect to do that in the spring? Would you bring that? Okay, so we would expect to have that come back. Okay. Fine. Thank you very much.
I think our collective purpose, purpose is to get affordable housing jumpstarted and on its way. So thank you.
Okay. Any more questions on this article?
Thank you very much.
Okay, questions from the board, the Finance Committee? Any questions from the Finance Committee? No, okay. Thank you. On to Article Five of the special town meeting warrant. This is a warrant article to see if the town will appropriate 7.2 million to be expended under, I'm sorry, there's a fly. Fruit flies. I apologize for that. You have one too, okay. Anyway, 7.2 million is what we are talking about tonight. We're not planning to re-legislate the 103 million that has already been approved by town meeting. We're talking about 7.2 million, which is the article for the middle school project. And so, Pat Nelson?
Yeah, I'm back.
Pat, how long do you expect to take?
I think about 10 minutes.
Say 10 or less. Okay, perfect.
Okay, I'll talk really fast. So, good evening. Like many of the public school projects across the state and the country, the Concord Middle School Building Committee and the town is grappling with the significant challenges presented by inflation, the cost of goods, and supply chain issues that are increasing the cost of construction beyond what was forecasted at the time this project was approved in January of 2022. So we have a dilemma as a town and as the school, the middle school building committee. We, we want to assure that the town receives the school that was voted on at the 2022 town meeting, and we also need to respond to the rising costs of this project. So, Chris, can you advance the slide? Thank you. So, as you know, in January, the town voted on a school based on an education plan reviewed and approved by the school committee in January of 2021. This design was inspired by 15 years of experience and studies specific to the education of middle school students, and is responsive to the academic requirements and social emotional demands that are placed on students while in these three critical years, that will prepare them to be successful contributing members of our evolving world. I take the time to point that out tonight, even though we are talking about money. This was a, we had a charge to build a middle school for middle school children, and I want that to remain in our minds as we think about this. Chris? The, the plan was developed under the leadership of educators who had a combined 50 years of experience in education and were specifically versed in the needs of young adolescents, along with Concord's tenured professional middle school educators. So this was a plan put together by the educators of our town that we are so proud of. The vision was entrusted to architects and consultants with over 40 years of experience in designing successful responsive schools. The town asked for an emphasis on sustainability. Chris, you want to advance? The town asked for an emphasis on sustainability. That was a very important part of this project. And the community asked for spaces to be included or expanded to make this new middle school a true asset to the community. The Middle School Building Committee took very seriously the promise of this school and the importance of addressing the inflation-driven cost overruns without sacrificing the academic sustainability and community goals. The approach to addressing the overruns was through value management. So much of tonight's presentation is going to trace this process, because it's important for the town to understand the process of the value management that took place. But I also need to frame these slides in the, Chris, you want to advance? I want to frame these slides with some information that at today's Middle School Building Committee, a change was made in our approach to managing these inflationary overruns. So up till now, we've been doing aggressive value management. But today, the committee voted to take an alternate approach to allow for elements to be, that are deemed extremely important to the project, to become part of the project's budget, even though they had been value managed out earlier, and then become deduct alternates when we go through the bidding process. Chris, go ahead and advance. So this strategy will allow us to bring to the town a school, or for us to continue to remain on schedule with the architects, to complete the design with elements in it that the Middle School Building Committee really do, did feel were very important to the integrity of the design. But it also allows for cost reductions when we get to the project's bidding time. And when we get to questions and people want more of an explanation, I will turn to my colleague, Don Goriello, to explain how all of this works. But I say this because, those of you who are going to go to our website and look at the detail in the slides, some of the numbers are not, not accurate, because we've made this change early this morning. It was a change of about $225,000 in the cost of the project. There's a lot of data, and I do invite you to, to go to the website and look at the, and look at the presentation. Chris, can you advance the slide? So this is a slide that, that kind of walks through some of the, the cost and the scope of the project, and how we, how we value manage down about $6 million over the course of the project. Chris, can you advance the slide? The critical piece of the dilemma is that despite all of the value management that was done over the last several months, the 60% construction document estimate continued to be stuck at 108 million. It came in at 108 million. We value managed down. We, we got rid of a whole, about $2 million worth of items, and we were still stuck at 108 million. And the question is, how could that possibly happen? Why does that happen? So what we had to struggle with was the fact that there's been, Chris, can you advance it? There's been, as most of you know, just unexpected and over-the-top inflationary factors operating in the construction industry. In the next two slides, Chris, advance, just talk about that, what that looks like in the Boston area. And, and there's data in the presentation that I'm not going to go over line by line that documents the unprecedented inflation that happened in 2021 and 2022. Our consultants and the committee closely followed the experience of school projects in the area. Chris, advance. Early on, we, we saw the Brookline Public Schools. They saw bids that came in 25% higher than their budget. This was happening all over the Commonwealth. Advance. These slides show different schools and what their experiences were. One of the things that we're thinking about as we go through this process is what's happening with inflation and what's happening with projects around us. We wanted to, to see where we stood. One of the things that became evident was that construction manager risk projects were coming in high, at higher increases in the cost of the projects than the design bid build projects. And we had, as a committee, voted on being a design bid build project. So that gave us a certain level of confidence that as inflation changed, we might be on the right side of those changes. So if you could advance, Chris, just skip over two. These are just more of these schools that were having these experiences. So our, our professionals have been tracking this very closely, and they have been observing this flattening of inflation. So that's, that's an element that has come into our thinking as we go through the value management, and we're thinking about what might this project cost when we get to the 90% estimates and when we actually go out to bid. While this was encouraging, Chris, you want to advance? While this was encouraging, we continued to do aggressive value management, culminating in our last round of value management in, that was voted on in, on October 22nd. At that time, we'd removed $6,184,000 from the construction costs. Next slide. So we're now at the point where the town is going to need to make a decision about whether or not they want to increase the budget for the middle school. The, the article is asking for 7 million. When we had suggested to the, to the Select Board that we do a not-to-exceed number in the article of 115 million, because that was a number we were comfortable with, given the unpredictability of, of inflation. But now we're at 110 million, and the town is going to be making that decision as to whether or not to, to add those, those $7 million to the project. Chris? I am going to ask Dawn to come up and talk a little bit about the construction inflation, if you, if you wouldn't mind, and what the impact is if the article doesn't pass.
Sure. Thank you, Pat. I'm Don Goriello, co-chair alongside Pat for the Middle School Building Committee. So we're looking at essentially, construction inflation is just under 1% per month right now. And I think the number that was flashed up earlier, do we have this slide? No. Yeah, the next slide. Yeah, Chris, next one, please. No? Next one?
He's going backwards.
I think you're going backwards.
Yeah, you are going backwards. I was like, that's definitely not it. There you go. Nope, back one. Nope, back one. Sorry, Chris. There you go. Okay. So it might be helpful if you're looking at what I'm looking at. So essentially, right now, in the past, and I think the previous slide said it, annual inflation was somewhere between 3.5% and 4% consistently. And we're looking at over 8 annually. So it puts it out at about 0.7% per month, or just under 1% per month. But a delay could cost up to 6 to, 6.5 to 5.5. The, a delay because if the vote fails, sorry, let me take a step back because I wasn't, I don't have a prepared topic on this. But if it were to fail, we would need to stop and redesign back to the 102 total project cost budget. What has been happening is the Building Committee has made adjustments via value management that Pat talked about, and allowed the designer to continue as not to bust the schedule, essentially, because we know that costs money. So if it were to fail, we would have to stop and make major scope changes to redesign. And what that does is puts us back about six to nine months. So that's where the increase in changes could be from a cost standpoint. Can I go back on this? Yeah. So essentially, we would be paying a designer to make those changes, and then looking at an increase in construction cost at about 0.7% per month for anywhere from six to nine months. Were you going to say something?
No.
Oh, okay. So redesign would be about $600,000, and then the total impact would be somewhere between 4.5% to 6.5%. And so what you're looking at would be, you know, a slight delay, an increase in cost, and a changed building in the form of major scope reductions in order to bring that building down to the 102, what it would cost to build a building now. Because as we know, it's actually, the building we want is closer to 108. Is that helpful?
Yeah.
Is that, okay.
You know, what I've learned through this whole process is how complicated this whole process is, which is why I urge you to go to the website and parse through the material. But the long and the short of it is that we are faced with a dilemma. And if this project, if the vote doesn't pass at town meeting, these major scope changes will take place. And what that could result in, to get us back to the 102.8 budget, is our net zero readiness would be threatened. The auditorium and larger gym that was asked for by the, by the community and was seen as a strong community asset would likely be cut. Academic program spaces would start to be impacted. The design of the educational plan would be impacted. We would not be able to do the fields. I mean, there's so much that we'd have to cut out based on what we know today about inflation and based on what we know today about the cost. Now, what we will know when we have the 90% design could change. What we know when the bids come out could change. So I'm going to take myself back to making that decision today to start thinking about deduct alternates instead of value management, is we value managed out just everything that wouldn't touch the academic programs. And then on the last day, on the October 22nd, we value managed out some more. So we kind of went over the line. And this morning, the committee tried to do a reset on that. And with the, with the plan of using deduct alternates, we took the approach of let's put those important things back in that we took out on October 22nd, but they'll be in as deduct alternates, and we can trim the budget then. So I hope this is helpful. And Don and I will entertain any questions. If your questions of Lori Hunter, our superintendent, we're happy to give it a try.
Pat, thank you very much, and Don. So we will start, as we talked earlier, with any questions from the audience. I recognize pretty much everyone in the audience, and they're pretty well informed on this project. But any questions from the audience? Please use the microphone in the center.
Yeah, Trivani Upadi again, from Katrina Highs.
Thank you.
So let me give you perspective here. I don't have the answer. We're talking about 102 million, 108 million. I read an article in one of the local papers that we're talking about for a median value house in Concord. We talk over $1,000 increase taxes per year. Now, $1,000 increase, some people say it's okay, but it's 1,000 on top of what people are paying, okay? So it's real money. It's not a phony money. It's not a value management. It's real money. The taxpayer has to agree to pay $1,000 more on top of what they have to pay without this additional increase. The second question is, yeah, it's a great project. Obviously, we need a middle school. But some of us were around when we talked about high school. And everybody knows the history of the high school, how it was managed. Now, my question is, if the project was approved by 102.8 million, that's a number, and the inflation, everybody agrees there's inflation, and everybody agrees that the construction costs have gone up. Okay, no question about that. That's a fact. I mean, those who are Social Security, everybody's going to get 8.7% increase next year because the federal government recognizes it's inflation. Now, keep that in mind, but also keep in mind that the Federal Reserve has increased the interest rate for the sole purpose of reducing inflation. Now, will they succeed? I don't know. But the plan is that they'll succeed, and let's hope they succeed. As a taxpayer, we expect the Federal Reserve to succeed, so the inflation will be less. Now, what it will be, we don't know, but maybe back to 3% or 4%. That's what they're trying to do, get the inflation under 4%. Now, what would that do to saving your number? Now, when people say the number came out at this, 108, 2.8 million, 108 million, less than 100 million, the question is, how did you come up with the number? And if the taxpayers are going to pay, my first question to the school committee and the Building Committee would be, how much profit is for everybody in the project? I would like that to be publicly aware. When you're doing the calculation.
I'm sorry, your last statement, I didn't quite.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to know from the school committee or the Building Committee to make it public in their budgeting. You don't have the final bids from the general contractors, I assume.
That's correct.
How much percentage of profit is there in your estimate? Because it's a town project. Everybody has to pitch in. If we ask the taxpayers to pay $1,000 more on top of what they're paying, which is generally high in Concord, how much profit is the contractors are going to make? Are everybody involved in the project going to make? Is it 10%? Is it 15%? Is it 20%? I wouldn't be surprised if it's less than 15. So I would say, if we're going to reduce the costs and ask the taxpayers to pay more money, let everybody pitch in. It's not a particular project for a business. This is for the community. And so those who are involved in building it, they should also pitch in. My whole idea is that if we delay the project, if the inflation comes down, which is what the federal government is trying to do very hard, and if we believe that they'll succeed, the price will come down. The other thing is remember that this project started, you know, most of you remember here, that it was supposed to be partially funded by the state. And that was about $20 million. So the taxpayer, because of however we got there, I'm not putting any, you know, why it got there, but if it was done right, the state government could have paid 20%, 30% of this $100 million. That would have reduced our taxes. So we missed that opportunity right there. So we are in the hole by 20%, 30% million because we didn't succeed in getting the state to sign up and approve it. Now, we increased the price to 102.8. Now we have to increase again. And I'm saying is, let's look at it and see how can we bring it to 102.8, or even less. There is nothing sacred about 102.8. The number, if we come out lower, there's nothing wrong in it. Everybody will benefit. And then the other thing is, what's included in the project, I think we should do a soul searching and say, do we really need the auditorium? Do we need everything in the building? Maybe we do. I'm not giving an opinion. I'm saying is, I think if we're looking for cutting costs, everything should be on the table. There's no sacred cow here. Because we can't ask taxpayers to pay more and more taxes and get all those things. We didn't have the contribution from the state. We added auditorium. We added everything we wanted. And now we say, oh, the price went up because of inflation. So now the taxes have to go up even higher. I think everything should be on the table, including the profit.
Thank you.
So this is my suggestion right now.
Thank you very much. And I'm looking at my agenda and realize that I forgot to ask Bob from our Finance Department to walk folks through the tax impact of the $7.2 million that we are discussing tonight. Sorry about that, Bob.
Gee, thanks for remembering.
Oh, yeah. I'm sure you're very happy about that.
Chris, if you can go ahead and start the presentation.
So this is, we're focusing in on the tax impact of the $7.2 million. Dory, I did see your hand up, so we'll get to you.
Fine.
Thank you, Peggy. Bob Lurlacher for the Finance Department. I'm going to give a quick presentation, kind of a big overview, and then really focus in at the end of where you are. Chris, go ahead. As you stand here today without the middle school, this is what your excluded debt looks like. It's the same chart you would have had at town meeting last winter, except I think it cut off somewhere around FY40 last winter. And as you can see, the top section is Minuteman. That goes out to almost FY50. The Concord Regional High School is the orange color, and then the rest of the town and the schools have short debt, just 10 years. So that's what you currently face as a taxpayer. You're paying about $1,000 more on your tax bill with current excluded debt. These are all facts. And it goes to, you know, it's going to drop significantly around FY39 and then go to zero in FY50.
And Bob, this is based on the median household.
This is on a median household value.
Valuation of 971.
Right. As of, yeah, as of last winter, that's right.
971,000, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, go ahead. I'm going to take you through two ways of issuing middle school debt, just as illustrations. There's three parts here. There's, if you look at the little boxes and the small blue section, the town has already issued $12 million so that work can be done on the, on the, on the project. That was issued with 20-year term debt at a level principal. And it costs the median taxpayer $131 in the present year. Tax classification happens in a couple of weeks. And next year, it goes up to 160, and then it'll decline after that. And again, that's the blue section, the very bottom section. To complete the rest of the approved project would be that orange section. And that's if you issue it as level debt service. And I'm not going to dwell on that, but the next slide, I'll explain it a little. And then what's at issue tonight is that extra $7.2 million, which you can see in that column, is about $80 for the average household, for the median home. And again, if you're doing level debt service, it's $80 every year, you know, for 25 years. Go ahead, Chris, one more. This is if you issue level principal, which is how the town has usually issued debt. It's a little more expensive because it's further out the yield curve, but it has the advantage, I'm sorry, the level debt service is a little more expensive, but it has the advantage of not having this shape. So you can see that the initial cost is $1,500 to the median household, which is about $300 more than it was with level debt service. At the end of the whole project, you'll have paid out slightly more money in interest. But the, you know, near-term taxpayers are going to take more of the burden than out the end of the project. I think it's about a $90 difference per household over the length of the project. Go ahead, Chris, one more. This assumes you do it the first way, which is level debt service, which spreads the cost out evenly over 25 years. And this just blends, you know, what you're looking at tonight in terms of, you know, the entire project plus that optional, if you will, $7.2 million, and adds it on top of that first slide you saw, which is the existing debt. So this would bring, as you can see in the box in FY24, it brings the tax burden up to about $2,200 for the average household. And it declines so that the average over the 24 years, or 25 years, is $1,500. And again, you can see, because of existing debt, this is a downward sloping curve. The actual middle school debt is not nearly as downward sloping other than the June money that's been issued. Go ahead, Chris. Now I want to talk about sort of the Select Board and the Finance Committee's roles in the next few months until there's a project and you need to finance. You need to decide and discuss what are your objectives? What are your priorities? The Finance Department has some tools available that I'll discuss. And this one here illustrates just one simple one, which was discussed last winter, which is the intention to have a $5 million stabilization fund and to use one quarter each year for the first four years. So that cuts that peak of $2,200 down to closer to $2,000. You save about $190 a year for the first four years. But as you can see with that reddish line, after the first four years, you do get a little bump up in year five. But the point is, with stabilization funds, you can engineer this curve to look almost any shape you want. You can't invent free money. But, you know, the Finance Department can, can use the stabilization funds to, that's a different way, to sort of get the shape of the curve that you want. It doesn't have to be spread out equally over four years. Some of the other tools you have that I don't need to illustrate right now, you know, you may, for instance, as an objective, say, we want to try to engineer the tax bill. That might be our objective. So we don't want it to go higher than X in the first year, and we want it to behave this way. The term of the debt, this assumes 25 years. The June issuance was 20 years. Logically, for a project of this size, you shouldn't issue for shorter than 20 years for the remainder. And you could issue 30 years. Wide open. You know, there's an appetite and there's a marketplace for any debt that's either 20 or 30 years. If you issue for 30 years, you'll end up paying more interest over 30 years, but the annual cost will be lower than what I'm showing here. So that's one tool. The second important fact is this all pretends that as soon as someone says, go, there's a project, you issue it all at once. For a project of this size, you probably wouldn't do that, even if, unless your interest rates are really low and you were worried. More likely, you're going to look at the cash flow that the construction folks have projected. And like we did last June, say, you know, we need to have $12 million on hand for what's going to happen for the next year. You're going to have a same discussion of how often do we want to issue? And how much do we want to issue? So that in fact, that peak in the first year probably would never be there because you might only issue a third might only issue a third of the total debt in the first year, a third in the second year. Usually, a cash flow is no more than 24 months for a project. But my point is, you can issue the amount that you think you need and a little bit more, and you don't have to issue it all and pass that cost along to the taxpayer. Now, if this was two years ago, I might have not said this, and I might have said, you should issue right away because you're going to issue at 1 and 1/4 percent. But now that's not true. Next slide, Chris. And importantly, versus what you heard last winter at town meeting, that was the blue lines. That was the projections for what it would cost the average household. The orange section is because of the rise in interest rates. The green section at the top is that extra $7.2 million that, you know, is going to be requested. That's about $80 a household. So there is two things going on here since last winter. Interest rates have risen. Can't do much about that. And the project has grown more expensive. And I just wanted to put in order of magnitude what those impacts are. You can't do much about the orange and the blue. The green is what's on the table. So that's all. If anyone with any questions. My point is that the town has some flexibility, but needs to understand what's your objective. You know, what does the finance committee want? What does the select board want in terms of cash flow, cash flow shapes? And the other part I should really mention is, as the town managers identified, there's some likely debt exclusions for the town for public safety and public works. So one thought might be, we need to make room for one more debt exclusion, say, 10 years from now or 7 years from now, whenever it is. So those are the things that, you know, the town should be thinking about before issuing this debt, because, you know, this is a significant amount, and it should be well thought out before it's just issued. I don't know if there's any questions.
Thank you, Bob. The audience? Yes, please.
Hi, Kristen Martinez, 66 Alfred Circle. Can you go back on the slides? I had a question on the cost to the median household with the little box on the left.
Okay.
Where you said 2,200. So there was one where you said the average total would be 2,200?
There it is. There it is.
Okay, that, Chris.
I'm confused.
Yeah, that includes the debt already on the books
Correct.
For the town and the elementary schools and the high school.
Yes.
So the net, what we've already approved last year at town meeting is about 1,000 per median household. And what we have in this article is about $80 per year per household, median.
So you don't add it across where it says 1164 plus 79?
Yeah, you're, see, the orange, the orange and blue, you're already paying.
Okay.
It's not an increase.
Well, what's in the left, what's in the left-hand column is what exists aside from the middle school. So you're already paying 981 bucks.
Okay.
And then the original project as proposed, using this funding, would add $1,160.
Okay.
And then 80 bucks for the additional.
Got it. Thank you.
What we're basically legislating tonight is $80 per median household of about, and the median valuation is about 971. Dory, I see you had your hand up for a while.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Dory Keough, 51 MacArthur Road. And I'm here, first of all, I want to thank the gentleman who spoke before, which much of this is not understandable to me, but I understand the idea of options. And I hope that the town, when a decision is made, will look at the option, which will spread things out more equitably, especially for the people who are the older residents of town, for whom $1,000 a year is significant. So for some people, it's hard, I know for many of us to believe, but it is true, and we found this out before, that $1,000 a year for some is a difference between meds and meals. And so I'm very much hoping that the planning committee will go back and look at what can be done that will make the school what we all hope it should be. It's long overdue, we all agree on that, and that's a whole nother story. But if in a meeting this morning, you were able to come down with a cost cutting of only 225,000 or something like that, that's significant. And I'm hoping that the building committee, which has already worked very hard, will really continue to find ways to do this. Because for many people, it's too much. And I think that while it is true that there's inflation and there's a cost of materials, there is a huge cost that we all see every week when we go out and do our grocery shopping. For some of us, that's okay. We can deal with it. For some in this town who've lived here for so many years, many have worked here in the town or the schools, that is not a nothing deal. And so I really hope that the building committee is going to sit down and talk about the two issues. I would go back and say one thing. In the past month, nearly a month, after both the FinCom and the select board have discussed this issue, it is only today that the, that the building committee has been sitting down to say, gee, what can we cut? And so I'm hoping that some serious thought will be done to do that now and to say, particularly focus on what is not academically critical for the kids. That comes first. It absolutely comes first. And if money can be saved in the issues which have come up over and over since this whole subject came, became, which is the issue of the gym and the auditorium, what can be cut? We must do this. And seriously, I'm saying to the building committee, please, I know you've given hours and days, but will you please put in a full court press to say realistically, what can you do? And if you can't make changes, then put it off for the nine months. It's bad now. It was a problem when, years ago. It's not going to get any better. So thank you very much. But consider everybody, not just the kids.
Dory, thank you very much for your comments. And I can guarantee you that the school committee, the finance committee, and the board of Select Ben and others are extremely focused on the issues you have mentioned. Now, I do want to clarify to you, the $1,000 per month, it's not 1,000, it's more like 1,200, and that was voted last year. That's already approved. What we are now discussing is another roughly $80 per year. The 1,200 that you mentioned is a lot of money. It's for, you know, but we voted that already.
Yep.
So what we are now discussing is the additional 7 million, 7.2 million. And that, what we're discussing tonight, Dory, and for everyone else in the audience live or in person, is amounts more to about $80 per year on the median household of 971,000 valuation. So for many of the folks you've mentioned, they probably aren't going to be above that median, maybe they're at the median, but it's, we're really, Dory, talking $80, not...
I'm aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Your comment didn't reflect that knowledge, so...
Sorry, thank you. Thank you for that.
But, Dory, I know you are on top of things and know what's going on, so maybe it was just a, you know, we're going back to last year. Okay, you can put your hand down. Anyone else in the audience would like to make any comments? We're taking comments more into question and when we, you know, kind of bring them all together, maybe, yeah.
May I just confirm something?
Wait a minute. We've got someone at the microphone.
Thank you. Court booth, 144 Wright Road. I am a member of the school committee, a member of the building committee. I was the chair of the design committee. I want to address the FinCom as a private citizen, not on behalf of the committees.
Okay.
I'll leave it to the chair to keep me in order on this.
Two minutes.
Thank you. I know we're debating the 7 million.
Correct.
We're debating the $80. But I think it's only the FinCom that we can look to, to see the investment and the obligation in its entirety. So I would hope that over time, we can look to you for the solar investment we're going to make. And also the fact that today, we added to the budget, only to perhaps later delete it, only to later perhaps consider it deferred to come back to the school committee. So I think we've got to look at all of these numbers before we know the true impact for this beautiful school. We don't tonight know that impact. And I'm going to ask you to take that on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. There are, between the building and interest rates and the actual bids, you're right, we don't know the impact right now.
Peggy, I'm looking for a clarification.
Who is speaking?
Kathy.
Kathy?
Yes.
I know, I'm, see, I'm looking at the camera.
I'm looking for a clarification. When the town approved first 102 million...
103, yeah. 103, if you round it.
Okay, so when the town approved that, it was at an interest rate far below where we are today.
That's, well, it was at 3 points, 2.75, Bob?
I think 3.75.
3.75. And the assumptions that Bob has presented us, I think, is 5.2?
5 and 1/4.
5.25.
That's not in the $80, though, right, Bob? So what's the number with the interest rate and the 7.2 million?
That must be about $250, because it's 3 quarters, 1 quarter.
That's my point, that when the, when the townspeople voted, the number per household was far less than it is now, and I think it's closer to $1,400 the last meeting that I attended, so. I think we keep talking apples and oranges.
Bob, do you have that slide that shows the increase with, compared with the 2.75 interest rate and the...
For the first year, it was $340 more. And it's roughly 3 quarters of that is interest rates, and 1 quarter is if you build a $110 million middle school.
So if you compare what we gave the town in the, in the report last year...
Sorry.
Yeah, thank you. If we repair, if we compare that, we said it was $900, that the incremental tax for the building at 103 was like $900 to the median tax bill. So if you looked at it today with the assumptions that you have, including the 7.2 million, including the 5 and 1/4, I think for flat debt service is what you'd assumed, then that number compares to what?
About 1,150. $250 increase.
So that's the difference that we would be predicting, understanding that most of that's interest rates, but that's the difference that's going to hit the tax bill, what we know right now.
Thank you.
Sir? Madam Chair, David Schoenbrun, 1679 Lowell Road. I think we're getting away somewhat from what's actually in front of us by going backwards. We have something that was approved last year. It's done. The only thing in front of us tonight is the 7.2, and we need to stay focused on that. That has an amount of money associated with it, it's $80. Anything else is already approved by the community. And if we keep looking backwards, we're just going to confuse ourselves. The other thing I think that's frustrating for the community is that we overwhelmingly, 80% or more, approved a plan. The fact is, the plan's going to cost more. But rather than giving the town an option to vote on an amount of money for the plan for the school that this committee has worked tirelessly to put forth and which so many of us want, we voted for a plan. And yet now we have arbitrary numbers being thrown around that compromise a plan that we want. So my ask of the committee is, I know this is a finance committee, and we're all focused on numbers, but not to forget the fact that the community agreed on a plan, on a school. And we seem to keep forgetting about that fact. 80% of us voted for a school. Why can't we get that school? Why can't that school be put up for a vote at the actual number it's going to cost? Why must we take cuts? As someone who likes the democratic process, it's really dismaying to me, as a member of the community, that the option of going back to the public and saying, you voted for a school, it's going to cost more. Do you want to pay it or not? Has not actually been presented to us. It's very frustrating, Madam Chairwoman and committee members, that the people aren't being given a chance to speak about the school that they've already voted on. And we've related only to numbers. We've forgotten about the reason that we're here in the first place. So I would ask the committee to please stay focused on the school that the community has approved overwhelmingly, and stop focusing on cuts, because that's not what the majority want. Thank you.
Thank you. I think our focus, I very much appreciate what you're saying. We have approved, only two things we know, that we have approved $103 million for a certain school. What we don't know is whether the community will still be 80% in favor of that same school for, you know, substantially more money, which we're talking about now, or even more substantially more money if we didn't make any value engineering, or if they only want to spend the 103 and cut the school. So that, I think, really is the question on the table. And the article that we are discussing tonight will deliver what the building committee believes is substantially the same school. Well, without some fixtures and lights and some other things, but it still has the gymnasium and it has the auditorium, basically, and some other certain things. And I think that's, and it maintains educational plan. So that's where we're at. That's exactly, you know, what we are discussing. Ma'am, at the microphone.
Hi, Irvishi Upadhyay, 142 Cambridge Turnpike. I certainly don't think we should relitigate the vote that already happened. The town approved it, you are right, and everyone's excited for a new school. But at that town meeting, I'm not very facile with the terms, but there was someone who gave a presentation about people who are sort of at financial risk, where this increase in their annual tax budget would put them in danger of not being able to stay in the community. I don't remember the terms. And so when we just say, oh, it's just $80, or it's just 200 something dollars, it's a little bit of a privileged thing to say. And I'm wondering if that kind of analysis has been done, if the cost goes from this 1,100 ballpark frame to now 14 something. And I say that because the first article we discussed here was about wanting affordable housing in this community and us valuing having a wide swath of people be able to be in Concord and benefit from this town. So it's a little bit counterfactual to then also somewhat create policies that will make it hard for people to stay. So I just am wondering what that analysis looks like. Maybe it's very few people who are affected, but that would be helpful, I think.
Thank you. We have, and both the finance committee and, you know, we have certainly looked at the average income spread within the town, and we do fully understand that it's impactful at any level. Any other?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joel Gagne, 31 Central Street. I just want to second what the gentleman said, but I kind of want to put it in a little bit more context. You know, one here is, is I really want to thank the building committee. They have spent two years on this. And I can't thank them enough of how much they've donated their time, but not getting paid for this. They've lent their expertise. They really know what they're doing. They put their heart and soul in this. And like that gentleman said, we voted on a building. And I got to admit that I'm pretty dismayed by the fact that we seem to be doing a lot of corner cutting. The building was approved. If there was a time to talk about the costs, it was town meeting. One person spoke at town meeting about the costs. It was an 18-year-old, not exactly your normal taxpayer. And now we're talking about more corner cutting, more cutting. This is, it's, the building will change the more you cut from it. And we approved a building. And I don't think people will be happy if the building that we spent two years talking to the community, getting their input, where a select group of people now are sitting and saying, well, why don't we cut this? And why don't we cut that? We approved the building. And I just feel like the tone toward the building committee from this committee, from the videos I've watched, from the select board, had been something adversarial. And the one thing that I point to that's really dismaying to me is the fact that the select board went from 115 million down to 110 million. That is cutting it very close. Again, these margins were passed by 80%. The overwhelming majority of people in this community were ready to pay that bill. And the fact that we are hand-wringing, oh, well, they might not support the next bill. I can live with it. If we democratically vote it down, I can live with that. But we've got to put it to a vote. We've got to let people decide. And it just seems like the building committee is under intense pressure. And I disagree with the concept that, while they need to keep looking at more cuts, they have been looking at cuts, and they are making cuts. And actually, they're making just cuts in hundreds of thousands. They made cuts in the millions now. And it's just like, we, I really hope that we can get this project to the voters and let the voters decide what they can and cannot afford. We shouldn't be so presumptuous about what they can and can't afford. And I, and as I sit here and look at these cuts, I really, my children went to Thoreau. The gym is undersized. The auditorium, when my daughter just graduated from fifth grade in June, was wildly undersized. We couldn't even get a class in their parents into that undersized gym. And I'm like, how did we get, how did smart people in this community who care about education come to a building like this? And now I'm seeing firsthand how they came there. I just moved here four years ago. I, I'm here for the schools. I really love Concord Public Schools. I love the commitment that people make to these schools. I'm all about it. But when I looked at these buildings, I'm like, how did we come to this? Let's not make the same mistake with this. I really encourage you to work collaboratively with this, with this, with this building committee. I thank you, Madam Chair, for your work and the work of the finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Gagne. We appreciate your comments. We appreciate your your comments. Dean.
Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace. I just want to make a few comments on my own behalf. I'm not presuming to speak for the community or anyone else in the room. But I've been observing absolutely every single one of these building committee meetings. This is a difficult process. I commend every person who has participated in that process. And contrary to some of the comments that I've heard about how they're cutting left, right, and center, I feel as though they're they're not really being well-served by the OPM or their architect. They're being offered draconian choices, absolutely irresponsible choices when given options for value engineering. To come to a meeting and be told you can have the gym you have, or a 6,000-foot gym, which was never part of the program, the original program had a 7,000-foot gym, is an irresponsible value engineering choice. To be given the choice of a 270-seat auditorium, the very original size, or 420 seats, and not given something in the middle, maybe 350, maybe 320, as an option where we can all come to the middle somehow and find a way forward, is irresponsible. And today, at the meeting that I just attended, one of the options for what's called an alt deduct, where if the budget sort of blows past the not to exceed 110 million, was to literally take all of the athletic fields off the table, $1.5 million. This is not a choice. This is just an irresponsible option being offered by the by the OPM. You don't take the athletic fields away. All that is is a way of ducking around the $110 million not to exceed budget, because you're going to need an athletic field and you're going to find a way to fund it later. So I'm just here to say that the committee has done a remarkable job of, you know, navigating this course. They've been ill-served by the professionals that we have hired to do this work, and we've come to a position where I think we're going to have a really nice building. So let's go forward and see what we can do with what we've got. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Dean. Any other comments? I don't see any hands raised online or anyone standing up, so let's go, let's let's have a little talk within the finance committee before we, yeah, hold on just a minute, a D. We are, we do, we are scheduled, it's, it's 9:15.
No, it's 8:15.
What?
It's 8:15.
Oh, it's 8:15. Yahoo!
So we can talk for another hour or something?
Yeah, okay. Okay, then let's go through the finance committee, but reminding everyone that we are going to guidelines after the hearing closes, so we're going to be here for a long time. But, oh, thank, wow. I would like to just, just so everybody gets a chance to go through the finance committee alphabetically, is that, does that work for folks? Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Okay. So Ray Andrews, you are first. If you, no one, no one need feel that they need to speak or whatnot. We are, we are, we're in a position, we could vote our, ultimately, we are going to vote no action, which means we're against this article, or affirmative action, meaning we're for it, or abstain. And we are, we could do it tonight. I think that would be kind of rushed, but we could if everyone feels comfortable with that. Otherwise, we are going to be on Monday and do it on Monday. We don't have a whole lot more time before we have to get, I see you, Lois, just a minute. We don't have much more time before we have to get our finance committee report put together. Is that what you were going to say, Lois?
No, it wasn't. Actually, what I was hoping we were going to do in this meeting, and what I'm hoping that going through the finance committee is going to do, is to give us, as the members of the finance committee, an opportunity, which will be our last opportunity, to ask any questions we have.
Yes.
Of the committee. And then I think it's likely we'll do the vote on Monday, and that's, that's plenty of time to get the report done. So that doesn't endanger the report. But I don't, I don't, I'm hoping that your goal in going down through the committee members is to give us each a chance to ask any questions we may or may not have.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks, Peggy.
Ask questions of the committee, the building committee, to talk amongst each other.
Or Bob.
And reflect on what we've heard tonight, what we've seen, you know, from our our finance staff, et cetera. So Lois, you were last, but I'm going to go back up to Ray Andrews. If, so let's just do this so I don't miss anyone. Ray?
Yeah, I certainly am curious as to what Dean was seeing was not looked at in terms of value engineering or value management. Two people, I'm trying to think, the other person that mentioned that, maybe it was Chris, who mentioned the, the committee seemed to be looking at the small items but didn't look at the large items in terms of the value engineering. If we're looking at 7 million or something between 1.3 and and 1.10, yeah, it would take some large items. And I think Parrishar also mentioned a comparison that would would have bigger adjustments than a few hundred thousand here and a few hundred thousand there. So I'd be curious what those larger adjustment items, larger, well, the bigger items, the bigger items that we'd have to, the town would have to say, yes, we want those and we're willing to pay more for it. Is there a question hidden in there? Yeah, I guess there is.
I'm not sure, honestly, Ray, if there was a question or a comment, but.
Several people referred to.
It was an excellent ramble. Two minutes are up, okay.
Okay.
Shresh. Not here. Okay, I'm next. Briggs.
Shresh is here, by the way.
Where are you?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
No, I think I echo what Grace said and some of the other members say, or the committee members mentioned. I think it's important to see where all things can be reviewed and everything should be on the table to try to make the, you know, the initial, initial budget of the 103 million. And at this point, I think we are way past that, so the best thing would be to look forward and say, hope for the best, and try to make it so that we don't, you know, miss the schedule of what's being planned right now.
Thank you. All right, looks like Briggs comes next. I do, Chris, Christine, really appreciate your digging in a little bit more to the $89 being more like 250 when you include interest. Now, most of that 250, most of that 250, well, everything other than $89, we'd have to pay whether or not we add it onto the school, so, or added onto the budget. My personal feeling, you know, having honestly sat through Alcott, the Row addition, Willard and the high school within town government, you know, I, I do feel this committee has done an incredible job trying to figure out how to develop a middle school, you know, with, and we are, we're sort of stuck. I mean, we don't have, unlike the high school, we don't have help from the state, and we don't have help from Carlyle. So this is going to be the biggest expense this town has ever undertaken. Now, that was approved last year, and the 7 million that were, you know, we, I don't want to legislate what we already know, which is, we want the school and we want it for a certain price. We're going to get, I think, a little bit less of a school for a little bit more money. And, hey, you know, we've, no one's not been through that, right? I think, I think the analysis that our town budget department has done, it's been excellent, really impressive, really trying to keep it straightforward, pretty simple. It's, you know, it's going to add to the tax bill. But I think, I think delaying it is going to add more, and I think we just need to move on and get this done. So if anyone.
Peggy, are we, I don't want to interrupt you, but I guess I'm going to. I thought we were going to use this time for questioning. We're not taking our vote right now, right?
No, we're not. No, but I.
So I don't think, I don't think the board members should be, the FinCom members should be put in a position where we have to express our views on this. I think we should get our questions answered, and then we'll have our discussion.
I have no other questions. Okay.
Okay.
Next, Kathy.
I guess, like Ray, my, I really don't have a question per se, but I do have a few observations that I'd like to share. I came on to the finance committee after the program for the building was approved. And when I came on, I was quite surprised that we were going forward without state aid, given what we went through to build the high school and what our debt service looks like. So to the people who said that the town already approved a building, that is true, but the rate environment was different. So I, I understand that the building was, was approved, but the economic impact of that approval has changed dramatically. And as far as building something that is the ideal, I have done my own home, and there are times that I have to compromise and not have the ideal, but something that's been wonderful to enjoy. So I do think that asking people who have worked very hard on on these plans to go back and rethink things is is not such a horrible thing. I do think about the town and the people in it and the amount of burden that we're putting on ourselves, all of us, for 25 years. And, you know, maybe the answer is to burden us. Bob talked about the fact we could do it for 30 years. But I, I do think that this is an awful lot of money, and as Peggy said, the largest thing we've ever undertaken. And whether it was approved as this building or not, we should still be thinking about the cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Eric.
Thank you, Peggy. First, I want to say I really appreciated the presentations tonight as well as the public input. I have one point of clarification and then a few questions. First, my point of clarification, it sounded like some of the speakers expressed concern that we are standing in the way of a vote by the taxpayers. I certainly respect your input on this, but, but I want to clarify, we, the finance committee doesn't have the authority to do that. We're not doing that unless something very significant changes. This is going to town meeting in January, and we're empowered to either recommend approval or not. That's the role of the the finance committee. We're not, we're not, we're not holding up the vote.
That is correct.
My questions, first for the school building committee, your presentation, which again was very, very helpful, very informative, you pointed to recent school construction projects in other districts where construction costs blew way past authorization. Can you, can you tell us, how did those districts proceed? Did they end up cutting scope? Did they authorize more borrowing? Did they use oppa funds? What did they do or something else? What is it that they did?
And actually, Shresh sent an Excel spreadsheet that the MSBA, they had a meeting with owners' project managers recently. They're tracking all this. I can share that out or we can put it on our, it's public. The MSBA, the Massachusetts State Building Authority, is keenly aware, because as you might imagine, their projects are coming in over budget, and that means they are giving more to them, or it's somehow affecting them financially. So they are tracking it. So in there, it will tell us, and we know some of them, like NOSID, I think, got approved. So a lot of them, the majority of them, have either straight through their city management and financials are able to approve. That happened on my Lowell High School project. The city just funded the additional millions. That's one way a city can do it if they have the borrowing capacity. Multiple towns have gone back to special town meeting. Grattan Dunstable recently approved theirs as special town meeting. There's a couple more swampscots in at like 4% or 5%. I forget, it's within the last few weeks. They're trying to see if they can cover it with contingency. So my answer, my long-winded answer is, it's a lot of communities' problems right now, and they're all managing it in many different ways, but many of them, Andover's going back to special town meeting after the first of the year. So there's a handful that are doing exactly what we're doing, which is going back and asking their community to borrow the additional amount. So that Excel spreadsheet where they're tracking the overages, they're tracking if it's CMAR, DBB, they're tracking what percent against the budget. It's worth commenting that the budget overages, a lot of those projects that are bid right now, their budgets were set a year or more ago when the climate was different. So the bus is because of recent changes. Our most recent estimate, which we received a month ago, includes today's dollars. So we're at worst-case scenario estimate dollars, if that makes sense. So we're not setting the budget in a climate where the costs are lower. We're setting the budget now with today's dollars, which are all higher, as we know. So we're hopeful that our overage isn't as severe as what we're illustrating. Does that make sense? And Eric, does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you. Very helpful. One other question also for the the building committee. So if if the vote fails, you talked about if the vote fails, and I really appreciate that, because I think it's really important to lay it out for the taxpayers. This is really a binary choice, you know, not not accounting for amendments. This is either a yes or a no. If it fails, if it's a no, and you proceed with reducing scope, can you, can you point to, I'm a little confused about, what what will your top targets be for scope reduction? I heard net zero readiness, the gym, academic program space, overall design, and then, of course, the fields. Do I have it right? Is that, is that the list specifically?
Thank you, Eric. I probably should have stayed up here. Yes, short of redesigning it, which is what would end up happening and our our committee agreeing on things, we recognize to take a step back. Our project does, and I'll use the language that our our citizen used earlier, it does have sacred cows. It's got three of them. The educational plan, which speaks to how the students are going to learn today, tomorrow, 50 years from now, it's a 50-year building, that's number one. The net zero-ready charge that was put out on the floor back when the the special town meeting approved the $1.5 million, we were charged with providing a net zero-ready building. That factored into our decision-making. And then the community input, when we said, oh, we're just going to do the MSBA basic 6,000-square-foot gym and no auditorium, because the MSBA would otherwise not, you know, participate in that, we'll just do a cafeteria or a small auditorium, we heard loud and clear from the citizens that that was important for them. Those are ours, three sacred cows. Those are our three sacred cows. So as we considered what would stay in the project versus be value-managed out, we did our best to hold dear to those three concepts. In the scenario where the vote would fail, and I'm getting to your question, Eric, it is going to impact all three of those. It will impact the educational plan and some of the educational spaces that we're trying to maintain. It will, in fact, you know, affect the net zero readiness. Example, value management offering, $500,000 to go from triple glazing to double glazing. It was not approved. We did not accept that because that net zero-ready ability would be stripped because that affects the EUI of the building, it affects the mechanical system. We held dear to that. So that's $500,000 that we had to say, we think there's value there. Our community is invested in a net zero-ready building. And then lastly, the community spaces. The auditorium is a fairly large dollar amount to provide. The larger gym, I think it's the difference between 6,000 and 9,000 and change, to have two cross-court MIAA basketball courts so we can have parallel practices for girls and boys at the same time, as well as community basketball. All of that is important, but they're large dollar ticket items. And we felt strongly that the building that was approved should hold those values. So to answer your question, if it doesn't pass, those are the items that will likely, I can't say, it's a committee vote, but the gym may get smaller. The auditorium may go away. The net zero readiness could be affected and likely will be. Some of the educational spaces and definitely fields, landscape, that sort of thing. So is that, I can't say because we haven't designed that building, but those are the big-ticket scope items that I alluded to earlier.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Eric, anything else?
No, thank you.
Those are excellent questions. Thank you very much. John.
More point of clarification. So the town approved a budget regardless of rates and the risk of rate movements, correct?
I'm sorry, say that again.
So the town, when we approved the budget, approved it regardless of rates and the risk of rate movements, right?
That's a good question.
We showed them what was current.
Right.
That's essentially what happened.
So 80-plus percent of the town accepted knowingly the risk that rates would move?
What we approved, what we approved was a bond issuance for almost 103 million. Now, if the rates are 10% or the rates are 1%, that can change. I mean, we've, all the elementary schools and high school, what's voted is the amount we are bonding.
Correct, but not, right, so the focus...
Not the terms.
Right, the focus on those terms that we keep coming back to is a sunk cost. So we're really focused on the impact of the $7 million because 80-plus percent of the town knowingly accepted any financial risks because they approved that budget. I just want to point a clarification.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yep, that's a good question. And in fact, I know with the Willard School, interest rates were low and projected to rise and we financed that whole school in one lump sum, just as Bob was referencing, which we probably wouldn't do this time. Rates, okay, good question. Thank you very much. Greg? I saw you sneak in. Where are you? There you are. Any questions? No? Okay. Amrit?
No, I have nothing, thank you.
You're my man, okay. Don, I know that's not going to be you.
No, in fact, I was going to ask for Amrit's time. No, just kidding.
You yield to the next gentleman all of your time, okay.
I really appreciate the chance to ask you a couple of questions because I'm not as familiar with the project as I should be. And I'm glad to hear that we're planning to do it right. It's a 50-year building. So my first question is, has it been designed for expansion? Has it been master-planned for future expansion? Should we have need for that? And then following on that, I'd like to know, what is our current middle school student census? What is our projection of students 10 years forward? And what's the capacity, design capacity of the building?
I can take the design capacity. Maybe Lori can speak to it. Was it census? Was it amount of students?
Yeah.
Okay. So the design capacity is 700 students. I think we're at 670-something? Oh, 650? Okay, thank you. See, I'm not the superintendent. I'm also not the designer, but I do know that it's designed for 700 students. Our class size is fairly small. I want to say it's 19 or 20, 20-ish average class size. These classrooms are sized for the, the MSBA has a range of classroom sizes and we've always followed sort of the recommended give or take. And they can fit up to 24 students. So per each classroom, there's three teams per grade, nine teams and four general classrooms. So the math on that's 36 times four. I don't have a calculator, but there's some flexibility for additional students in the future.
And what is our projection of enrollment in the future?
Yeah, so we definitely have looked at that. The projections are actually up slightly as we go forward, but the opening of a new school can change that. So we're at 650 now. We've built for 700. And that is, we have varying degrees of options here that tend to feed in. So like, for example, we have almost 200 kids that are out in private schools within Concord. We actually transport them because we have to by law. We do expect more of them may stay at the middle school than go out to Fenn and some of the others. So we're trying to be sure that we're projecting where growth will be adapted and really addressed without a huge issue. So I think we hit the sweet spot through creative looks at the class sizes, the team sizes, and the common spaces. So we've got that swing, but we don't think it's to excess.
So what is the projected student?
Yeah, you'd have to ask me what year you're asking for the projection.
Tenure story, because again, I'm thinking master plan.
Yeah, I'd have to get you the current NASDAQ projections that are in our books that we publish every year. So we're expecting the updated ones immediately.
But we're designing the school, so we must know what our future...
Yeah, it's about 650, stable. The elementary schools feed that information to us.
And to get to the 700, would we go from 19 to 24 students per classroom? Or is that the idea?
That's essentially correct, but we wouldn't have to add a team. We wouldn't have to add cafeteria or other big, huge common spaces. We'd be able to address and envelop those right within the teams and the classrooms.
And if we found ourselves with 800 students, could we add on to this building?
I couldn't answer that without a designer in the room. I don't know if Don wants to try to tackle that. It's not built to go to 800. We built for 700. So whether you could add a wing or a team, I can't speak to.
We didn't design with that in mind?
No, we felt seven was a good number. So it would take an extraordinary shift in housing and other things for that to happen.
Thank you, thank you.
So if you take the 36 general classrooms, and I'm just talking teams, three teams per grade, nine teams, and you take the four general classrooms, so you have English language learners, you have, what do they call social studies now? It's the social studies, math, and science, right? So you have your four general classrooms, not language and specials, not off-team. You're looking at, if you take 20 average students per grade, that's 720. So we're under 20 design. So if you were to take those 36 and increase by four, you would add another 144. So you're, you know, you could squeeze 864 students in this. In my experience, the classrooms, I'm an architect, by the way. I don't know if you, so I design schools, not here. I just live here. But in my experience, you can fit up to, some communities do 25 kids per class.
I mean, we're living it now. The high school wasn't built for the 1,300 kids that are there because they know, that MSBA knew the enrollments were going to drop as the kids aged up. So you can shoehorn them in and do fine. We're glad the high school's going to reduce. We think we've hit the sweet spot here with the middle.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question? So up to excess of 850 if you fully fill those classrooms.
Anything else, Don?
Nope, that was it, thanks.
Excellent, thank you. Very good questions. Enrollment is the driver. Lindsay.
Just piggybacking on Don's question. So I work in higher education and we talk a lot about the kind of enrollment cliff that's going to, you know, going to this like demographic cliff that we're reaching around 2025, 26, where all of a sudden, you know, students are going to start declining, our high school graduates are going to start declining. And by the end of the 2030s in the U.S., it'll reach levels not seen since the early 1990s. So we're going to be seeing, at least across the U.S., and when I looked at this from Massachusetts, kind of the same thing. You know, enrollment's just declining overall. And so I can, I just wonder if that was factored in at all when you did the capacity planning? I know you expect more students to come back in from private schools and maybe attract, you know, new folks from out of town because of the new school. But did we factor in just general demographic patterns for the U.S. overall? Because even if enrollments start to climb again in the late 2030s, I don't think, it'll take a long time, maybe the entire 50-year life, to get back to kind of where we are today. That's, okay, so those are all factored in. And then the next point was just along John's comment. We really, just to kind of piggyback on that. So today, we're talking about this $250 impact average over the next, you know, 50, or next 25 years from this debt. That could also, could that also, you know, shift down if, when we issued the debt, right? The rates could be lower, right? So it really is about this $80 is what is known. The rest is kind of, you know, risk, we accepted back in January and that may change in our favor too in the future.
So I'm going to turn to Bob on this. The 250 minus the 90 is 160.
Right. 250...
You can math-check me on that, what?
250 was the current estimate of just the interest rate change.
And is that, Bob, the question I'm just going to ask you, is that for the full debt or the 7.2?
That's for the full debt.
So it's 160 is the add-on for the rate increase from 2.75 to 5, correct?
Yeah. And the 250 is in the first year, it does decline to a lower amount over time, for what that's worth.
So if, you know, if we issue that debt, if interest rates come down, we could refinance.
Yeah, interest rates could go up or down. But if they're higher, and they're higher now, and even if they go higher, you can refinance, just like a homeowner. So you have a one-way option that's to your benefit in the future.
So...
Good question, Lindsay. Okay, thank you, Lindsay. Dee.
All the questions that I have have already been asked. So I just, I don't have any new questions.
Well, aren't you smart?
I know. And I just wanted to thank the Building Committee for the work that they've done in the last two years and probably even thinking about it when you're sleeping. So I really appreciate all the work that you've done. Thank you.
We're all thinking about it when we're sleeping. Thank you. Thank you, Dee. Perashar.
So again, thank you for all the work and I appreciate the chart making clear what the consequences are of saying no because I think that now provides a stark choice for voters. I actually had one question. One of the towns you referenced said they used ARPA funds to make up the difference? That was on one of the slides? And I'm just kind of curious how that happened.
Contingency. So baked in every estimate and every project cost, there's contingency because you don't know, right? Like if you're renovating your home, you might take down a wall and the cast iron pipe that it was put in in the 1920s has a big crack and you have to replace it.
No, we have several contingencies. Design contingency, bid contingency.
Yes, that's right. So my point is, they're trying to figure out if it's an acceptable way to use their contingency so they don't, and that was swampscot, so they don't have to go back.
I'm talking about Westwood. If you look to slide 15, Westwood.
Okay.
On slide 15 of your presentation, Westwood, you said, used ARPA and other town funds to bridge gap between the construction budget and the construction bid. So I'm just kind of curious how they did that? Is that a mechanism that might be available to us if we're in that position?
I don't know the answer. Our professionals put that together and we will ask them.
Very good question.
So you're talking about the slide, not what we actually said. So I misunderstood, sorry.
No, no, slide 15 is where you made that reference.
Yep.
And so I think it's, we should look into what they did.
We will find out.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so that was my one. Excellent. I had just a couple of points to make, right? One is, I don't want to re-legislate what happened and didn't happen. We cannot read the minds of the 3,000 or 4,000 voters last year. From my perspective, the community agreed on a school design and a plan with all the schematics that were shown and a dollar amount. It wasn't just the plan. It included a dollar amount. And they had some impact on taxes in mind because that information was presented. All of that information was presented, the vote was taken. If 80% of the folks wanted the building regardless of the cost, somebody could have made a motion to that effect, but it didn't. So I have to assume that the vote was the combination of design and cost. But I just want to make that point. But that's water under the bridge. I agree, the 103 is sunk cost. We're talking about the extra 8 million. I think at this point, it's pretty clear we have a choice as a community is to proceed with the extra 8 million, 7.9 or whatever it is, and see what happens. If it passes, great. If it doesn't, at least voters now have a choice of what the consequences are if they turn it down. So I thank you guys for doing that work and we'll see what happens.
Thank you, Perashar. Chris, you have been very patient.
Thank you, Peggy.
Next time, I'll start at the bottom.
That's all right, that's fine. So my question is going back to a little bit of where we are now and what we're going to do with the Alt-Delete process. So you've explained that your approach during VE was to limit the impact to space. So there was really no changes to the space in the VE since the June surprise of the $6 million, a $5 to $6 million overrun. So now we have this, we're going to be with the 110. If we go for the 110 at the Special Town Meeting. And it looks like, when you look at the inflation and the escalation numbers and the cushion, if you will, between your construction costs right now and where you are at the 110, it looks like it's a reasonable number. But bidding is a whole other game, right? So bidding will depend on a whole lot of things, right? Supply and demand and, you know, who comes to the table for the bid. So it's not as easy for us to project what's actually going to happen in the spring with the bid. So the process that you started today, I think, is an important one in order to have or create more room for yourself to the extent that you have a surprise at the bid. So I agree with Mr. Vanfield's comments that although it's a, not a, you know, not a... I understand why it was selected to sort of look at the fields. I agree that that's really a big cost of furl and not really a way to make savings. And so I understand why it gets on the list. It's something you can sort of put a circle around. It's certainly something that could be done later in the project. But my suggestion is do not go there first. There are other items that were raised in discussion that I think could be considered. And I know they haven't yet been looked at, so I offer them to you to look at as you think about possible Alt- deletes, if I have them correct. And that's the kitchen outfitting. So we know that number is something like 1.3 million for the kitchen, including the serve area, the audiovisual, which we talked about, which is quite a large budget, the sound system, so the number of speakers in the gym and so forth, also very expensive systems, the telecom systems, the bollards outside. So I know there was some review of the materials for the bollards, but the number of bollards is still quite high. And the security cameras. So I think there were something like 100 security cameras in the parking lots, a number that I know people haven't yet looked at, but that's one worth getting after. So these are things to me that are sort of more in the FFNE space that could be potentially put on that list of Alt- deletes to get, you know, to give yourself more room under the 110 to avoid a bidding surprise. So, yep. So, yep. Yep. Please.
If it's under FFNE, it's a soft cost and it doesn't come in under the bid number.
Okay.
So that actually won't help us. But I appreciate you, I took notes on what you said.
Are those all in FFNE, Dawn?
I'd have to, so kitchens base bid, that's not FFNE.
Yeah.
But you need to still serve lunch to 700 students, so.
You do, but you have a million something, a million three there, right? So I'd like to have lunch there for a million three.
I mean, that's, I don't know. In my experience, that's not excessive, that's going rate, but, and I assume they have a food service consultant, that's what they do.
They do.
That is literally all they do. They, they speak the language when I go into food service meetings. I don't even talk.
Right.
Because they know what they're talking about, but they know what, you know, what types of equipment, how many quarts of a mixer they need, they know everything. So kitchen is in the base bid, AV is in the base bid, and bollards would be in the base bid, but some of the other, anything that is FFNE, so actual equipment, projectors and furniture and that sort of thing, soft cost, that's above the line, and the hard cost are like, if you think about taking a building, flipping it upside down and shaking it, everything that falls out is essentially FFNE. That is like what you furnish after the fact, and everything that's still connected when you take it and flip it upside down, that's hard cost. So that's like a really simple way of describing it, but we use that analogy when I talk to people.
Right.
So that's a way to think about it. But anything that's a soft cost wouldn't affect bid numbers, just the difference between the hard costs. Our bidding numbers are hopefully going to be in the 80s, 80 million-ish. We started at 80. We're at 86, I think, right now.
Right.
We hope to be under 90. But anything on top of that, it wouldn't change the bid number. So that's not, on bid day, that wouldn't.
Okay. All right, so those are some ideas. I have some other questions, you might want to stay there for a second. So just to answer Dawn's question, so the NESDEC 10-year projection on middle school for enrollment is 608. So if we're at 651, their projections in 10 years will be at 608. That was the answer to the question, Lori wasn't sure. They have a new report, but that's.
I'm sorry, you quoted a bunch of initials, I don't know what that word is.
This is the agency that provides those to us.
And when was that, Chris?
That was last year's report.
No, I'm sorry, but when is the projected 608?
10 years, so 2031.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's good to know.
It declines, right, 50 students or so.
Unless we are successful in building more 40.
I understand, this is what they projected, I'm just, I'm just telling you. So my other que, I'm sorry, Lori, do you want to say something?
No, go ahead. I just, 608 is a reasonable number. We were in Lincoln two weeks ago, there 100 students, other, under what capacity they built for, that's very typical and normal, so.
And another analogy I use in, when, if you build it, they will come, in my experience, in a lot of the communities in which we design schools, and especially modern schools that are flexible and, you know, modern educational delivery, they, their enrollments do increase. I'm not saying it always happens, because I don't have a crystal ball.
Okay. And with respect to the capacity, so when you look at the utilization of the classrooms, I think it's 72%, somewhere around there.
So these classrooms are going to be used six out of seven periods a day. The seventh is the teacher prep. The teachers teach five. The sixth will be with someone pushing in for either digital citizenship or health. So that's incredibly important to us, that the teachers have that one period a day where they have the room to themselves to prep and prepare for the kids that they serve the other five periods.
That's 85%.
Right. It isn't the 72 that was on paper at one point.
Yeah, six out of seven.
Did you do something to get it to 85?
We're pushing, we're pushing in the technology and health classes, so it's a usage of six out of seven, not five out of seven.
Okay, so that's a change?
That was over a year ago.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
Okay. On the fields, the other point I was going to make there, so CPC has money for outdoor space, and I would think that that's an option for us here if we have an issue trying to get the fields done. So I'm hoping that you will be really thinking about that seriously and figure out a way to get, get some of that money, right? So that's taxpayer money that we use for outdoor space, right? So that could be, I believe some of it was used for the high school fields.
We use those for the, we use CPC money for the synthetic fields, the white fields.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's something that could be.
So long as they're outdoors.
Right.
We, I think we received a public email, like, to our committee about that, and I would encourage anyone with experience or that can offer help. We, yeah.
She is.
You've got three former, three existing and former CPC chairs in the room, right?
Diane, you can help us.
No, I mean, honestly, like, that would be great. I don't have the experience, our committee wants to come to the table saying, hey, let's look, consider this. We're all ears.
The CPC can impact support. That's one of our, one of our major, of four areas that we give money to is in recreation and outdoor use.
And, and you.
And I think, sorry, yeah, so, I mean, and we, that would be a wonderful thing for the, I can't speak for the committee and whether they're.
Diane, what are you doing tomorrow? We'll have.
And the way, Diane, so the way it works, you can apply for a larger project over multiple periods.
We are going to help. Our bandwidth is pretty thin right now.
Yeah, I mean, you can anticipate that the building, the fields would be finished in three years.
Yeah.
And begin to apply over time.
Right, right.
So thank you, Chris, for that point.
Good question. Okay.
Okay.
I mean, I say that, but you moved a million something earlier.
Yeah.
Okay. Those are.
Excellent question, yep.
Those are my questions.
That's it? Okay, thanks, Chris. Brian, looks like you're up next.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Oh, great. Wanted to just quickly echo colleagues' thoughts around, thank you so much for all the work, Building Committee. I just so greatly appreciate all the, the hard work and effort. This has just been, I know, a monster of a project for, for all parties involved, so I just want to say thank you as a, a parent that has kids in the school system and all of your thought and care around that. I, I think many of the questions that I had have already been covered. I have one question for Bob, actually, which is somewhat minor, but I'm just curious. With respect to the incremental 7 million or whatnot, is there anything currently with respect to our debt rating that might change the financing of this in the foreseeable future?
Not in terms of your debt, debt rating, but certainly interest rates change. But no, there's no reason why the 7 million should put you over some hurdle where someone says, oh, now you're not as good a credit. That shouldn't exist.
So I think what he's referencing is our AAA bond rating?
Correct.
And Bob, has, you have indicated us, to us before, that this would not affect our AAA bond rating. Is that correct?
That won't be the reason that your AAA may change one day.
No, 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 right. What I'm trying to understand is, you know, the, the current proposal that we have, and then in addition to this, and, and any other unrelated issues that we may need to consider, I just want to try to understand, is there anything extraneous that may impact that we just, we should be aware of at the moment?
If, if there was something going on in this project that was unique to Concord, then the rating agencies might ask a question, but they understand full well, this is not your problem, this is generic. So no, there's nothing going on in this project that would call any negative attention to the rating agencies.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else, Brian?
No, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, Lois. Really, next time I'll start at the bottom.
That's okay. You saved some time because I have no questions now for the middle school committee, because I keep making checkmarks, because my colleagues on the committee have already asked all my questions. I just have a quick question for Bob, and it follows up on what Brian just asked. There are other big borrow, potentially big borrowing situations looming in our future. We heard about them at the committee in Carrie's presentation, I think it was last week, the need for a new public safety campus, the need for new public works facilities. When do we have to start being worried that putting this much debt on the town and then needing to layer on that additional debt potentially, not even potentially, actually, it's all going to be a timing issue, we will need to build those structures? When do we have to start worrying about our bond rating? What's the point at which we're going to get into trouble?
The rating agencies would be concerned if you were trying to finance things inside the tax levy. So if you were trying to stuff a $50 million, let's say, public safety campus within the tax rate and not ask the voters for excluded debt, that would get their attention. If you're going to ask voters to pay a little more in property taxes, the rating agencies will barely notice. That's not what they're concerned about. They assume taxpayers understand their own capacity to pay. They're concerned about the town as a credit, not the taxpayer.
That's, that's helpful. Thank you, Bob.
Okay, well, let me just sum, I was taking some notes, and just to summarize some of the questions, Bob, maybe you or Lois can take these down, and anyone who wants to add to it, feel free to. Let's see, we had questions, just to, I think, to clarify, the amount that taxpayers at the average, not average, median, a 971K household valuation would be affected, one by the 7.2 million at the two, at the 5.2% interest rate, and also what is that increase on the previous assumptions that were made for the 103 million? Let's see, we had a question. Ray was interested in value engineering and comparing some larger estimates. Kathy, you mentioned, also mentioned rates, oh, and, and what it might look like at 30 years instead of 25. Kathy, I think you brought that up. Eric, if the vote fails, what then? Who wants to answer that one? Raise your hand.
We did, that was a slow.
Yeah, we did.
Can I, can I ask a question?
I want to, I do want to expand on, if the vote fails, I think the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look over to our moderator. I think the alternate and delete process should be presented at town meeting so that if the dollars fail, or, or if 7.2 million isn't enough and we need more, or we need to take some money, we can't get more, so then we have to take some pieces out. And I think so long as those pieces are presented at town meeting, so it's not a change that wouldn't meet the moderator's definition of the scope of the article, then that's the importance of those alternate deletes. Sure, is that?
Peggy, can I, can I ask a question?
Who's, who's speaking?
This is Brian.
Thank you, Brian, yes.
Just as a follow-on to Eric's question and your, your comment there, I was going to ask the, the building committee, the sacred cows that were referenced, the Ed Plan, the Net Zero Plan, and I think it was the fields was the third. I may be wrong on that.
Yep, no. Sorry, Brian, I just wanted to clarify, it wasn't actually the fields, it was the auditorium and larger gym.
Yep.
The community, meaning like after hours and for community use.
Okay, and, and just my question on that is, if, if there is a no vote and you do have to start thinking about alternatives, have you gone through the work of force ranking those sacred cows, or is that still, is that still, sort of, still a work in progress?
No ranking, I mean, for, like, I'm just saying, the way that the votes went implies that those are the critical pieces of the building at our committee level, and I don't want to speak for everyone, but the, you know, decreasing the size of the gym was a value management option, and it didn't come to the forefront and didn't pass as a accepted value management. So the point is, we tried to hold dear to the project, those three items. And so there were alternatives that were proposed that affected, and I used the triple glazing earlier, that would affect the net zero ready piece of the building. That did not pass as an acceptance of value management, so it's still in the project because the committee felt we needed to hold on to the ability to have it be a net zero ready building. Did we rank those in a priority? No.
Okay, I, I was thinking more the alternate delete process would be.
That's what I want, yeah, that's what I came up here to clarify.
But those would be useful if the 110 isn't enough. Like, the bids come in a little higher than that, and we have to drop some things out of the building, not down to the 103.
That's correct.
I'm not sure that would fall within the scope.
That's correct.
Of the voted project.
Yep.
And I would defer to our town moderator, who probably would say I'm going to have to call town council, but.
No, Carmen Reese, town moderator. If the vote fails, there's really no question for town meeting on, on what happens next. There's no, nothing, unless there's an, an article on the annual town meeting.
It's over.
For town meeting to think about. And, and actually, by the time we get to special town meeting, the warrant for annual town meeting will have closed. So there would have to be another special town meeting in order for there to be any further question about the budget for the middle school. One observation I did want to make, though, on the question of the sacred cows, is the zero net readiness. I was trying to check this on the town website while I was sitting and listening, but the server seems to be down, so I could not check. But if my memory is correct, the zero net readiness was made by way of amendment as a condition of the town's approval of the funding for the original 103 million dollars. And if that's correct, then I think you can't take it out.
Yeah.
If it's a condition of the funding. So that would not be an area that you could deduct. Thank you.
I'd just like.
Ms. Reese.
Peggy, it's Kathy again.
Kathy?
Yeah. In your, in your notes, the follow-up, I'd just like to have a look at what Dean was suggesting in terms of the sizes of the auditorium, instead of an all or nothing. Is there, is there a halfway? Or, you know, some, some of these items might, might be helpful.
Okay, so Kathy, I think what you're saying is to put those in, in the alternate, wait, don't go away, Carmen, to put the, those in the alternate delete, but at the same time, I think it's important to know that the town voted for those items, and it would be up to the town moderator or town council to say, just like Carmen mentioned on the Net Zero, can those be deleted and still be within the scope of what was previously voted by town meeting? So there's two questions there to answer.
So if you're, if you're asking whether there's anything else that was part of the project that was as it was voted, that could not be removed, I'm happy to talk with town council about it, but I'd have to say, I don't think so, unless, because the only specific consideration was the zero net readiness, and otherwise, there was a budget. And the only specific condition on the budget was the zero net readiness. And obviously, the money has to be spent on a middle school and, you know, and, but, in terms of exactly what the project looked like, that could change and not impact the validity of the vote.
So what we voted for was 103 roughly million dollars of a zero net ready middle school.
Yes.
And that, there was presentations at town meeting, slideshows, graphics, et cetera, but those aren't, you're saying, part of the article per se. So if it, if this failed, you'd still have 103 million dollars to try and build a middle school?
Yes, because if you.
A zero net ready middle school.
So I would want to go back and look at the specific language of the article that was in the special town meeting warrant.
Okay.
And my memory of it is that it talked about the budget for the middle school without specifying the particular design.
And that, that amendment was actually at the 1.5 vote back in 2019 to get the schematic and feasibility funding. So, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
It certainly was leading to the net zero ready. It wasn't part of the 103 vote, yeah.
So wasn't, so that was part of the schematic design?
Correct.
All right, thank you, I couldn't check.
No.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Peggy, could we just clarify, because there's a couple of processes, Lori, maybe Dawn and I could clarify, there's two processes sort of getting mixed together because they're very confusing. So if we fail at town meeting and go back to the 103, and we haven't done any of this deduct alt planning, that the building committee is only, is the only body that has that authority to do, then yes, we're back to square one, almost, of redesigning, we're going to lose six to nine months. The point of the deduct alt process that the building committee is taking on right now is to try to build in cushions, like had been talked about tonight. So we will have a list, as a building committee, that has to be in rank order, by law, has to be in rank order, that if we're over the 110, when we go to bid, you automatically, because the building committee approved this order of cushion, you automatically go to those until you're in budget. So it takes care of itself if the building committee can get enough cushion between now and town meeting, and we're over the 110. If we're, if we fail at town meeting, though, and go back to the 103, we are starting all over again and losing six to nine months, including on things like, do we do a smaller auditorium, do we do a smaller gym? We're at almost 90% design development, you can't do those things now. So just to try to sort it all out for folks.
The alt delete process, in my view, had to do with, what if we come in over...
Yes.
...the bids come in over 110?
Correct.
I wasn't talking about going back to 103.
Right.
The 103 is if the whole thing fails.
That's the total project cost. The bids are going to be in the eighties. The bids are hard.
Right, yes.
So I just want to be, there's so many numbers, and if you're not in the industry, it can be really confusing. So I'm trying to be really clear, our bid should be, if we were hoping for 80 million construction cost, we're estimating at 86 right now.
Okay.
If those numbers come in at 88, or actually, we've done the math, it's actually anything over 90, 89.7 or something. Say they come in at 90, but we have a, so that's hard cost, we have a deduct alternate to, I'm just going to make something up, to take the deal out for 0.5, that brings us under the 90, which keeps us under the 110 total project cost. Does that help?
Yeah.
So you need it, it's, it happens all the time, I do it in my projects all the time, it's a strategy to try to get competitive pricing. And you can add alternate, or you can deduct alternate, and those are different strategies. We're saying, we want all this scope, we want it in the project. Our hope is that we're going to get competitive pricing. If we don't, that is a way to say, we'll still stay under the 110, that may or may not be approved at special town meeting. If it does, we'll stay under the 110 total project cost, and that'll be a way to manage the hard bid cost, to keep us there.
And you start digging into the contingencies that you have. Parrishar has a question.
Two questions, actually.
Two questions.
So the alt deduct, does that apply to the OPM costs and other consultants' costs?
No.
So they're not giving up their percentage at all through the whole process?
We already have contracts with them.
So the answer's no, they're not giving that up.
But they needed formal approval to keep working right now. So it wasn't just a them decision, it was a town decision through the town manager's office to support them to keep working.
I understand that, I'm just pointing out that if the bids come in at 92, they're not going to give up any of their fees, and we've got to give up some of the things that we want for the school. That's the, but they're not deducting their fees. That's, okay. The second question, just very quickly, is, so that's that question. Never mind.
Okay, interrupt me. Okay, Dawn asked mainly some questions about the enrollment for the design of the building and the future. Chris added the same question, so maybe a little written answer to that would be helpful.
And Peggy, could I, this is Dawn again, could I add one more?
I know, I keep looking at them.
Yeah. I just did some math, I appreciate that the building is, we don't think we'll have to add to it. If we were to be at 608 in 10 years, and we had 19 students per classroom, that's 32 instead of 36, and if we started with 32, that would mean 20 students per classroom, rather than 19 in the early years. So I'm wondering if you looked at that.
We've scoped it out to a point. What I know is that we have limited special education space, we don't have a maker space that we hope for, we don't have an all gym that we gave up. There's a number of options of what, in an open classroom, should it ever happen, be used for, and not go unutilized. So we certainly have sketched out all the numbers and done the math as far out and under different configurations. We'd have to decide as a school committee, that's a school committee decision, as to what class size would be, and how many spaces we'd use or not use.
Lori, if your team could give us a short written answer, I don't, unless the finance committee feels otherwise, I don't feel we're prepared to vote tonight. No, okay, I agree. Yeah, I know, you can vote, I can vote. Well, we'll take a vote on voting, but we also have some questions that we could get answers to from Monday. Just one second, Carmen.
Remind me, when do we get the 90% estimate?
January 1st, yeah, 13th.
13th.
It's reconciled. If you're considering that, it would have to be reconciled on Monday meeting, then they do their project sales.
Microphone for the folks online.
Yeah, you have.
Publicly, I think it's, I think our meeting's the 14th, but I think it's available the 13th in the packet, and it's reconciled in the day or two before that.
So 13th is a Friday, you guys have a meeting on the 14th.
No, sorry, so I have the numbers wrong. January 13th is the date that I have, is when we're going to publicly share it.
So 13th, you're going to, so who's then responsible for amending, or getting ready to make an amendment if the number has to increase?
It's a motion. It's not an amendment.
So somebody's going to make a motion on the floor to increase the number if that happens?
I don't think we can.
Yeah, the motion, the motion in the handout. Carmen answers the question.
Nobody can make a motion on the floor to change the number?
Oh, sure.
In this particular case, the question is whether the number can be changed in the motion. In this particular case, the article states that the number shall be not to exceed, so I would rule any motion to increase the number under the article to be beyond the scope, but a number less could certainly be moved.
Okay.
I just wanted to follow up on the question that was asked earlier about whether or not various other types of deductions or changes in the project could be made and still be consistent with the vote of special town meeting to authorize the original budget for the middle school. And Chris was paying attention and was good enough to actually email me the warrant language, so I found an opportunity to look at it. And it's quite clear that it's 103.7 million for the purpose of building, there's no linkage of the motion under that article to the specific design of the building.
Okay.
It's for the middle school, to be spent under the direction of the Concord Middle School Building Committee, and what it includes, design, site prep, construction, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you, Carmen.
Yep.
Okay, so Lindsay, that was also enrollment, question on ARPA funding, if there's anything associated with the project that could be funded either under ARPA or CPC. And I think we know the answer on CPC, but it might be worth just getting a brief response to that.
Can I just say, I texted our designer after that question came up about ARPA, and she wrote back and said it was related to the HVAC system, and she'd looked deeper into it. So that's all she knew, so.
Are we going on public sewer here, or do we have a septic system? You should know that question.
Septic.
Septic, so that might be ARPA funding. It's infrastructure.
Also, this morning, I forgot to ask this, I'm sorry, it came out that there is not an existing irrigation system in the middle school, but am I correct on that?
There is.
There is. But we have not assumed anything in this project. So that's another one, like someone mentioned, Dean mentioned, there are other costs that could come from this that we haven't quite seen yet. We talked about solar, there could be others.
The irrigation system was, has never been part of this project. We named that right after town meeting. It is going to be something that has to get addressed at some point, there's some infrastructure there because of the current irrigation system. There isn't a funding plan. It got mentioned this morning briefly, we'll have to talk more on that. If it doesn't come out of the project, the school committee's going to have to work with us on that.
Okay, I'm going to raise the question as to whether the committee feels we want a written response to all this, we are meeting on Monday. Well, we're scheduled to meet on Monday, we don't have to meet on Monday. Or people want to cogitate, you know, review the tape, watch this at home. Yes, sir.
Information?
Yes, please.
The 608 number that's been thrown around as to the predicted number of students for the middle school, that contraction relates to a lot of the age and place population we're seeing today, but does it consider what would happen when a new school is created in a community? Does it even consider that attractive force? I don't think it does.
I think, thank you. You'll be happy to hear, I'm not moving out of town.
It's demographics.
But, and Pat, maybe you're not either, so, yeah, we do have that aging in place problem, but, you know, I think that we've adequately addressed the pros and cons of the size that we're building, and then 19 students to 20, 23, 24, whatever. So I feel there was a reasonable answer that comes up more, more challenging question to ask at the elementary school level, actually. So I do see, yes, Eric, briefly, and then you, Dory.
Thank you. Peggy, I just wanted to flag, I think the moderator made a really critical clarification here, and it's a point we've covered on the margins of this discussion, not just at this meeting, but I think it really deserves to be front and center. It's been said pretty often that the voters approved a particular design, the voters specifically voted to approve a design. And if I'm understanding the moderator's clarification, that was not the case. There was no language in the January 2022 special town meeting warrant article, or, and this wasn't covered, but I looked at this, or in the subsequent ballot question itself, and that was in February, related to a specific design. So it's, my understanding is that the voters have not voted to approve a specific design, neither at town meeting nor on the ballot. I think that's really important.
Eric, I agree with you, that is, it is very important, and we have spoken on many occasions that we know only two things, which was the amount approved and the design approved. So we legally are bound to the amount, but we're not legally bound to the school. So that, it is a very important distinction. And, Dory, did you put your hand down?
No, no, I do have a question, a very quick question, is that okay? Over and over, what's been mentioned today is the two big issues, and that is the gym and the auditorium. I would really request that before town meeting, that the voters have an option of finding two prices and two plans for both of those issues. They've been brought up at least 12 times tonight in the discussion. I think they're what really much of this centers on. So I would really make a request, and I can only do that, but to say, I would really like to have prices and differences brought forward before town meeting, so that people at town meeting have a chance to see what they could be voting on and what it might save. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dory. Okay, I am going to just take a quick straw poll of committee members and whether they feel they have the information at this hearing, or if they would like to vote action, affirmative action, which is yes, or no action, which is no, or to wait until town meeting, which is surpassing the buck, literally.
Peggy, I'm confused.
Yes, Lois.
You're not calling for a vote now, right? You just want to get a sense of the committee as to whether or not we feel we're ready to vote, or whether we'd rather have a vote on Monday night.
That's correct.
So let's, instead of raising the question of what we would be voting on Monday night, let's, why don't we separately address the question of, do we, as a committee, feel ready to vote now, or would we rather wait until Monday?
Okay. As a committee, I'm going to ask folks to raise their hand if they feel they're ready to vote tonight.
Sorry, hang on a second, Peggy. Before you take a vote, Peggy, what are you asking the vote for?
Asking folks to let, to raise their hand if they are ready to vote on the warrant article, in favor or against. But I'm just asking if you're ready to vote on it, I'm not asking what your vote is, just if you have enough info, and you feel like you're ready, and not going to change your mind, or you're, you know, just ready to vote, then we can vote tonight. If this, if everyone raises their hand, and for folks online, I just need, hold up your hand and not use your icon, and that will be pretty easy to then get a feel for whether we want to go ahead, and if that's the case, we'll vote tonight. That make sense, Amher?
No, but I'll figure it out, seeing how many people raise their hands. If everybody else understands, that's fine. I'm asking whether we're taking a vote on our, on whether we support Article 5 as printed, or whether...
Amher, what we're doing is deciding whether we want to vote, period.
So do we want to vote tonight or Monday?
I got that. Okay, thank you.
Ready to vote tonight, or do you want to vote on Monday? So for every, everyone who feels like they are ready to vote tonight, please raise your hand, and if you're online, do it with your regular hand, and not your icon, or your cellphone. Oh, thank you, Brian. Okay, so we have, I think, just two nays, right? Lois and Ray are not ready, everyone else appears to be ready.
You guys are buying pizza on Monday.
Well, we have a clear sense of...
Are we going to vote on both of the warrant articles tonight? And we did, we do have another warrant article that we need to make a decision about.
Well, I really just, we should, yeah.
Because if we don't vote on Article 4, but we vote on Article 5, then we have to have a meeting on Monday to vote on Article 4.
All right, let's raise your hand if you're ready to vote on both Article 4 and Article 5.
For both articles, or are we ready to vote on both articles?
Okay, it's unanimous in the room, and we're still...
Okay, sure.
Lois and...
You're off the hook on the pizza.
Brian, is your hand up?
Yeah, well, yeah, I was thinking about Max and Leo's pizza. But I'm ready to vote.
Okay. All right, it looks unanimous. So we're going to need motion, and the good thing about being chair is you aren't allowed to make a motion.
One second, this is the reason I asked the question, what are we voting on? I assumed that if we're going to vote on it today, what Parrishar said was, effectively, do we want to meet on Monday or not? I assume if we're going to meet...
No, we'll cancel our Monday meeting.
Wait a minute, no, but we still have to vote on the guidelines, so we're not canceling
the Monday meeting until we make guidelines decisions.
I am hoping to get the guidelines over with today, too.
We're only halfway there, we're not even halfway there, okay?
Okay, Peggy, hold on for a second. My question is this, are we going to have a discussion before we vote, or is this just a go-to-an-immediate vote?
Oh, I believe we have. Wait, I, I believe we have...
Peggy, Peggy, if we're going to have the vote, I think we should adjourn the hearing and start the finance committee meeting?
Okay, that's a good point. Thank you very much, Lois.
Motion to adjourn the hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Do we need a roll? Aye.
You do need a roll call vote, it's a hybrid meeting.
We need a roll, let's do the roll call. Okay, Ray.
Aye, yes.
Perash?
Aye.
Peggy, aye. Kathy?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Greg? Amher?
Yes.
Don?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Dee?
Yes.
Perashar?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Brian?
Aye.
Lois?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. The hearing has been closed. Thank you all for attending. You're welcome to stay for the good stuff. Let's just get these two votes done, and then we'll take five minutes before we start the guidelines. Okay? Make a motion.
Make a motion? All right, let's get this over with. We don't need to, we don't need to open anything.
Your FinCom meeting hasn't yet been called to order, but other than that...
Okay, we'd like to, I, I would now call to order a regular finance committee meeting. Okay, the regular finance committee meeting and guidelines subcommittee meeting together. Roll call? Okay, Lois?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Christine?
Here.
Perashar?
Here.
Dee?
Here.
Lindsay?
Here.
Don?
Here.
Amher?
Yes.
Don?
Eric?
Yeah.
Kathy?
Here.
Peggy, yes. Perash?
Yes.
And Ray?
Here.
Okay, so we are now, we are now in a regular finance committee and guidelines subcommittee meeting, and we have closed the public hearing and will add, well, it's not on our agenda. During the hearing, the FinCom vote on warrant articles, if prepared to do so as part of the hearing, so I feel like we're well enough advertised to go ahead and move those agenda items into the regular finance committee and guidelines.
May I make a motion?
Please do.
Motion to approve Article 4 Community Preservation Act Community Housing Reserve Fund.
Okay, that, just to be technical, we're voting affirmative action on Article 4 for the special town meeting. Recommend affirmative action. You said approve.
Recommend affirmative action on Article 4 Community Preservation Act Community Housing Reserve Fund.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote coming up. We'll start at the top this time. Ray?
Aye.
Perash?
Yes.
Peggy? Yes. Kathy? Eric?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Amher?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Perashar?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Lois?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Going in the other order on the next article.
Make a motion.
I, and, yes, that is, sorry, that was approved unanimously, and I so declare.
Make a motion, is it affirmative action, for affirmative action on Article 5?
That second was, who seconded?
Greg.
Greg, okay. And we'll start at the bottom. Lois?
Come back to me.
Okay. Wait a minute.
So Peggy, this was my question, are we going to have a discussion, or are we going to a direct vote?
Yes.
Excellent point, Amher.
Okay, we have a motion, which has been seconded, and any discussion?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
So is the FinCom open to amendments on the floor, or is the FinCom opening, open to making, proposing amendments on the floor? And I can specifically think of one.
I thought we were not allowed to make motions?
No, that, that, the article can be amended on the floor of town meeting.
Absolutely.
But it can't be, but we cannot...
I understand, I understand.
Okay.
Sorry, I understand FinCom can't make a motion to amend, but I'm sure that FinCom in its report can make a recommendation with an amendment, or discuss an amendment and propose it, and on town meeting floor, any one of us could make an amendment. Yes, I'm aware of that. My question is, are we willing to discuss such an amendment here?
Sure, absolutely.
The one I specifically am wondering whether we should add is a caveat on the impact on the monthly taxpayer bill. We've heard from enough people that the meeting voted by a margin of 80% or whatever, but there's three reasons why people may have voted for, voted in favor or against. One was they wanted a particular school, no matter what it cost. One was they wanted a school as long as it cost $102 million or less. And the third is if it was a school which cost them $900 a year on their tax bill. We know that at least the last one is no longer going to be the case, and the second one's also not going to be the case. Shouldn't we put a caveat which says what the impact on the taxpayer bill should be before we accept another one of these votes? Carmen, you have email about this already, so thanks for the answer right now.
Thank you, Amher. And I see our, Madam Moderator has approached the microphone. Carmen?
I, I just want to note that I think you would want to consult with bond counsel on the validity of an amendment, well, not the validity, but what impact on the bondability of the additional funds an amendment that tied the amount to a tax rate would have. Would be a very unusual thing to do, and I would not hazard a guess myself as to what the impact would be, but bond counsel would, I'm sure, have a point of view.
Carmen, while you're at, while you're at the microphone, Carmen, just a quick comment. The, the way the article is written is it says, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum not to exceed 7.2 million. So in theory, we could borrow a sum less than 7.2 million if, if we were at the limit of whatever the, the impact on the tax bill would be. But you're suggesting we should check with bond counsel about whether that would allow us to raise the full money or any money?
Well, we have an original vote, which is fine for $103 million in round numbers. The question would be whether putting a condition with respect to the maximum impact on tax bills, on the increment that special town meeting would be voting, would have any impact on the bondability of that amount. And that, I don't know the answer to, and I would want to consult with bond counsel rather than have an opinion on it.
Okay. And the other question for you, Carmen, while you're at the microphone, would you consider relitigating 102 million within the four corners of the article?
I'm sorry, would I consider...
Relitigating the 102 million within the four corners? Because it says, or take any other action thereto, would you entertain a motion to challenge the 102 million?
No, I do not believe so. I think that that was, that would be, that would be basically a reconsideration of concluded action by town meeting, by a different town meeting. And this, there is not, I wouldn't consider there to be notice within the special town meeting article as it is written to revisit that amount to make it less.
Okay, thank you.
Amher, I'm just kind of curious, how would you propose, what specific language would you use to tie this into a particular tax rate, tax increase or tax impact?
Add a sentence in there which says, such that the tax increase on the median household shall not exceed the sum of $1,000 per year, or some other words to that effect.
So you would say, per year for...
The median tax, me, yeah.
I don't know, but for what years, I guess. I guess this is a bit more complex.
Yeah, it's way more complicated, because the tax increase changes every year. It's based on both the interest rate and, and the borrowing schedule, depending on whether it's all borrowed upfront, whether it's a flat rate or a sloping rate, whether we borrow in increments. I mean, it's not as, it's not like just getting a mortgage, where the bank says, yeah, here's your payment. It also, honestly, we know that, to further complicate matters, we're in a triennial revaluation, so we're going to be offering up, we were, we were discussing a number based on a home value of 971, but I, my understanding, and we'll find this out at the assessors' tax classification hearing on November 28th, is that the right day? I think what we're going to find out is that number's going to be up over a million, which means the tax rate will go down, but the dollars should be about the same. It, you know.
Well, the, the...
Amher, it's a good, it's, I think it's a really good question to ask, and I think that when we, and I'm not trying to short circuit discussion, well, maybe I am. Let's keep it on the table, and let's roll it in. Lois, maybe we can kind of roll the thought process into our FinCom report that goes out to everybody.
I don't, I don't know how. I, I already have a note. The FinCom report, whatever decision we make, is going to include some of the charts that Bob showed tonight, so that the, so there'll be, people will be aware of the potential impact on their property taxes of whatever action is taken. But I don't know how we can float an idea like this. I, I, I'm at a loss as to how that can be simply covered in the report and have any significance at all.
Well, I think we can, we certainly will put it in the, can put something like that in the report. We have the information, we can present it at special town meeting.
Something like, like, like what in the report? I mean, I, I really am just confused, Peggy. Amher is saying he wants to include a qualification. He wants an amendment to be offered that includes a qualification that tries to cap the, the exposure of citizens to, to tax increases tied to this borrowing, without commenting on, and I think I understand why he's suggesting this, but I don't know how I, it gets addressed in a report unless we vote to somehow include it in our recommendation. So if we don't include it in our recommendation, it's, it doesn't go in the report. It can be, Amher can get up as an individual, or someone else can get up and comment on this at town meeting, but it doesn't become part of the FinCom report, unless, I'm confused, I could be missing something.
Bob, Bob has stood up to the microphone, so I'm going to turn it over to him for a moment.
Hey, you're, you're mixing a few things together. I think FinCom has every right, if you want to, to say, FinCom, this is the motion FinCom will consider, and it could include, as long as the 72.2 million does not exceed X number of dollars per year. Now, that is, because you have no, your vote is just advisory to town meeting, you're not saying anything lawful. I don't think town meeting has the legal right to say that. I think that's the treasurer, possibly with the advice of the select board. The town meeting cannot dictate how tax bills are set, neither can you. The select board with tax classification sets the tax rates, and then I believe in Concord that they are advisory at least to the town treasurer or the, you know, CFO slash town manager as to how to structure a bond and how to impact the taxpayers. And certainly, if you have tools like a stabilization fund, that'll go in front of town meeting, and we want to have this impact on the cash flows of the taxpayer, help us decide. So I, I think you tonight can make an advisory, because that's all you're doing, discussion, which can't bind anyone, and then, you know, the town moderator would have her hands full, I think, if someone actually made a motion like that. You know, we can certainly check with bond counsel, I'm pretty sure I know the answer's going to be, no, you can't do that. That's not the question in front of town meeting. Question is, do you want to spend 72.2 million or not?
Thank you, Bob. That was, Lois?
Yeah, I just, it's, we're still discussing Amher's comment. I'm sympathetic to Amher's goals here, but I don't see how this is workable. I, I don't see, we, I think we either vote affirmative action, or we don't. When we didn't recommend affirmative action on the school budget at last annual town meeting, we stated our reasons, and we were prepared to potentially offer an alternative that worked out in advance of town meeting. But I think trying to, to micromanage a situation, as Bob just said, goes beyond our authority as a committee. There is our obligation, and what the, the, the report needs to do is make very clear the interest rate risk that's involved in agreeing to the additional borrowing. And I don't think we emphasize that in the special town meeting report last January, because frankly, none of us were thinking about inflation back then.
Exactly.
That is going to be a very, I think that, that's one of the things we need to be very clear, and we need to qualify Bob's charts by saying, this makes certain interest rate presumptions, and if the, those presumptions are too high or too low, it will affect the actual impact. So the, the charts have to be characterized as examples of potential impact, not as a guarantee, not as something you can budget for, but I don't think we can, it's, I don't think what Amher is proposing, much as I respect the, what I think is the impetus behind it, is achievable by us.
Yeah, I believe with our strong town manager, former government, that only the town manager can, does the financing, it's not even the select board.
So Lois, I agree with you. I mean, I, I'm sympathetic to trying to...
What? Try your word.
I'm sympathetic with trying to limit the impact on taxpayers, which I think almost everybody in the process has been, including the school building committee. I'm voting in favor of affirmative action, simply because the 103 is water under the bridge, number one. Even the $1,100 cost estimate was based on a 3% increase. Maybe that's going to be higher, maybe it's lower. We've only borrowed 12 million of it. We can borrow rest of it in chunks over time, and we're really talking about the incremental change here, it's $7 million at the end of the day. And as I look at the alternatives, based on what you submitted a couple days ago, it's a six to nine month delay to go back to 103, and that adds another 5.5 million on top of the 6 million we're already over. So we're really, in essence, talking about 11.5 million dollars that we would have to reduce and change from the current design at the end of the day. And if the voters, the voters will know that pretty clearly, hopefully, we'll simplify this in our report to make it very clear. So those are the two options we're really faced with, whether we like it or not, for events that are both within our control, the net zero and all the other stuff, and events that are not in our control, the increase in inflation, on construction, construction costs and inflation. And so the voters will then decide between those two. Personally, as a voter and as a citizen, I think we just go forward, we've got a risk, number of risks. I mean, the whole thing could still come in above 90 million, and we're back to where we were three years ago. But I'd rather go forward now and move forward with it, take that risk, than the alternative. I'm very sympathetic with the increase that we're talking about, but most of the increase is water under the bridge, and I don't think we can afford another set of increases, another delay. delay.
Thank you, Perashar. I'm putting you down as affirmative action. As a I.
Well, Peggy, this, we're in the discussion phase now. Why don't we not take the vote? Let's have the discussion and then take the vote.
Look, I didn't mean to close the discussion.
No, no, no. Yeah, I'm, I'm agree, I didn't hear it as closing the discussion, Perashar.
I was just articulating why I would.
Sorry.
I was just articulating why I'm in favor of affirmative action.
Okay, we are still under, having discussion. Don?
Yep. I wanted to respond to John's earlier question and then ask, sense of the, of the committee. John, you had asked if the taxpayers knowingly took an interest rate risk in that earlier vote, and I would say yes and no. It wasn't explicit that there is, wasn't stated that there was a cap. But FinCom did, in our recommendation, list the interest rate assumption and the impact on the median tax bill. So we put out there a number at that, that was not in the warrant article, but was in the materials given from FinCom. So I feel as though there are sort of, the taxpayers are owed two explanations here. One, the school building committee is going to provide, which is the inflation that has happened to the cost of the building. But the other, I think, has to come from FinCom to say that just to finance the portion that was already approved, the impact on the median tax bill will now be X plus 300 and some dollars. And then give our recommendation for the additional funding.
And I concur with that because if you were building your own home and interest rates went up this much, you would have to think about it.
Thank you, Kathy. Chris?
Yeah, so I, I agree with, with Don's comments. So my view was really based on process. I expressed it in an earlier meeting. So the VE process that went on from June until today, actually, it's still, where it was an adjustment again today, was more restrictive than I think was appropriate, given the, the risk that we have, the cost increases. And so the limitations about not looking at space, classroom space, admin space, outdoor space, all was considered part of the ed plan, really limited the opportunities to meet the budget. I think the school committee did a good, pardon me, the building committee did a good job within those limitations of looking through things, although, as I mentioned, there were a number of things that were not on that list. So the items I listed earlier, about $4 million between the AV, the, the system for phones, the, the cameras, the other items that were in there, the kitchen and so forth. So I think there are other things that could have been looked at, and I definitely think space could have been looked at, and I think it should have been looked at. The town is, I think, pretty generous, giving 103 million dollars to the building committee to build a school. I understand that there's inflation. I, I get it. But I think I would feel more inclined to support it if I saw a VE process that was really robust, and I'm sorry, I did not. So my view is, it has not changed since then, so I cannot support it.
It sounded like a vote, it's a little bit like a doc quacked, but we're not voting Further discussion. Anyone else? Lois?
Yeah, I, I agree with Chris. I, I, I really, I appreciate the work that the, that the middle school building committee has done. It's been extraordinary. And it's, it's enormously frustrating not to be able to just say, yes, go ahead. But at the same time, I don't think we necessarily. The town did vote for a middle school building that met, but, but the, it did so with the expectation that the building could be delivered within a certain number. And I just, from what I have heard and what I've seen in the presentations, I just, I would like to have seen a more robust attempt to deliver within that number. And then if that attempt failed, and they had to come and say, we, we, we looked at everything, this is how constrained we'd be if we tried to move it within that number, I'd be more sympathetic to the request for a larger amount. And I just, I hadn't, I haven't seen that, not to the degree that I would have liked to. So I'm, I'm actually very conflicted. I'm not happy to be voting against it, but I'm not comfortable voting affirmative action. I was kind of hoping, and I would see, I would consider buying the pizza, Perashar, that we, we could talk about this on Monday, because I actually would have liked an opportunity to think about this a little bit further before I have to vote. I'm not comfortable with, it's, it's a binary decision, and I'm not completely comfortable with it because of the kind of processes that Chris has raised, which I completely endorse.
So Peggy, since none of us are voting, could I also tell you what my vote is not going to be, just like everybody else?
I think I already told you what mine was.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you that if, if I was on town meeting floor and the article as printed in the warrant was presented as a taxpayer, I would vote yes. I think it's a reasonable investment. I think the school, the school, the building committee has done an excellent job. We should have a school. All of those things aside, I think the finance committee recommendation should not be vote affirmative action. The finance committee recommendation should be much more nuanced than that. I've heard many times during the meeting today that we're only voting about an $80 difference. That is not true. Between the increase in the, the price of the school and the change in interest rates, we are literally voting a change from under $1,000 to well over $1,100. So yes, they may not be things which are within our control. Yes, the money may have already been voted, but we need to be very clear that people voted for the school, they did for one of three reasons. They wanted the school at whatever cost. They wanted a school costing 102 million. They wanted a school costing them $900 a year, more than, than their current bill. Given those things, I think our answer should be way more nuanced than we're in support. And I think we're not, we're not doing a fair job of that, even in this meeting, by our saying it's only an $80 difference we're voting on. So until we can be honest about it and let everybody know that the difference we're voting on is well over $200, I would be uncomfortable voting yes in this meeting.
So Amrit, it's two, yeah, it's 250, it's not 80. I agree, I think we all agree. It's 240, 250, whatever that number is, it's not 80.
Yeah, correct.
And I think we all agree that the cost of the previously authorized amount has also increased because the interest rates have increased. And all of that, I think, should be made very clear in the finance committee report. I completely agree that that, that that ought to.
In the presentation.
And in the presentation, absolutely. All, my, my only point is, it really isn't a matter, from my perspective, it's not a matter of, can we go, can we ask them to go back and try to figure out to shoehorn the 103?
Yep. Perashar, I didn't want to repeat the things which, which Chris already said. I think there are other options which should have been presented to the people at town. For example, can we do the school in phases? Can we do it in such a way that we respect what the impact is going to be, rather than say, if you don't vote yes, then it is going to cost you more money, therefore vote yes? I, I think what's effectively a, we're being presented in the presentation with a lot of information, but with the fait accompli, and I don't like that.
I don't either. This is why back in the summer, I specifically said, come up with three options. And you can have very specific options for the citizens to vote on. Unfortunately, we're at a point now with really just two options. Go forward with the additional 7 million or face an 11 million, a potential 11 million dollar increase.
Yep.
That's what we're faced with, and I'll be perfectly honest, I, I don't disagree, Chris, with what you said. I'm not, I'm afraid that in fact, if we reject the 8 million and the whole thing goes down, I don't know that we'll do a better job the next time around.
But, but there was another person who.
That's, that's the risk of a taxpayer that.
I'm going to break you.
Peggy, one, Peggy, one more thing, one more thing. There was a gentleman who spoke, I believe his name was Joel, I don't know his last name. And one of the comments he made was, why don't we ask the town to vote for the school that the town wants? And a thing which maybe wasn't clear here is, nobody can, Perashar, you asked this clarification, nobody can move a number greater than 7.2 million. So maybe what he was referring to was, maybe the number on the warrant article should have been, what would the school, we said at the annual town meeting, cost today? Put the delta on the town meeting floor and special town meeting, and a lower number could have been approved, and then the committee could have gone back and figured out what build within that box. I, I'm conflicted by it, but I think right now, not having any options, my vote today has to be no. But I'm not telling you this to vote, because we're not voting yet.
We're not, Amrit, we're not voting yet, and I think the 115 that was floated is the number you're talking about because, well, I mean, the value engineering has been about 6 million, right?
No, that is.
No, no.
Because we asked this question at, in the summer, I asked for those three options. What would the cost be if you didn't make any changes? And we didn't get an estimate there. And what we got was value engineered number and then the six to nine month delay and the five and a half million extra cost, which is fine. But we never got a sense of what the school would look like or cost like if we made no changes. And that's what I would have preferred to go to town meeting with, and the school committee could have said, we prefer the middle option. But that's not where we ended up. And again, if we try to force issue, I'm just afraid we get more delays and a higher cost to the town.
Then I am going to move to Greg.
Perashar, I just want to say that they really, because of the nature of design, what there was at that stage was so schematic that you can't say, give us that building. It wasn't fully developed. So it's a question of how it was developed from that point forward that gives us the school we have today. It's kind of funny, it's as if people think there was a school that we voted on. No, it was just an idea, and, and it's been developed, it's design development.
I'll push back on that. There were images, there were specific ideas about expanded gym and all of that stuff.
And I'll take those images and give you two different costs that are twice as high as, you know.
I understand, and that's why the cost went.
Depending on the design development.
I understand. So that's why the cost went from 102.816 to 108. Part of that is what you said, and part of it is the inflation piece of it. But in June, when they came with 108, and it was above, that's when we said, well, if you didn't have to make any changes, when you get to 60%, give us a sense of what the true cost would be.
Okay. Perashar, thank you. Thank you. Greg?
Yeah, can we make sure that the FinCom in the report removes the 200 as part of this vote? That is not in this vote, because that's money spent.
The 200, you mean the money?
Because of the interest rate change. That is spent. We have no control of that with this vote. Chris, I see you're laughing. Is there, am I, am I incorrect, or is that correct?
No, you're not laughing, I just. Well, I didn't hear.
We're not talking, we're talking about interest rates and what the, the, I'm talking about, I want to know that we're not going to put out a $200 saying that that's part of this vote. I want to, I want to make it clear that that's not part of this vote.
As a matter of fact.
No, it's not.
Everybody is, everybody thinks it's not. That's the interest rate that's already done and already paid for, right?
No, no.
It's. This, this, correct.
It's, it's.
What's the, what's the.
Greg, I hear exactly what you're saying. We have, what you're, what you're.
I'm asking, I'm asking a question, sorry, because I keep hearing it come up.
It's 80, it's 80 dollars for the increment. The 160 of the 250 is the interest rate impact from the 1.103 million, and that's what you're saying that needs to be differentiated.
So if we did nothing today, the FinCom had no thing, the 160 still would get applied to your tax bill.
That's right.
Is that correct or incorrect?
That's correct.
That is incorrect. That is incorrect, because at 102 million, they would not be able to build a school at this point. They would have to go back and do reengineering and.
No, hold on, hold on. Let's just ask, Greg, let me just answer the question. Bob can say yes or no. 7 million dollars, if we use the interest rate that was used back for the 103, it was, it would be about 80 dollars. However, at 5% interest rate, it's an extra 160. Is that accurate?
No.
Okay, so then give us the accurate numbers. Because I thought that's what we.
No.
At today's interest rates, the 7 million in front of you, 7.2 million, costs 80 dollars with level debt service.
So where's the 250?
Can I ask Bob my question? Can I ask Bob my question?
There's other factors and there's other pieces, but that's what it would cost you, and that's technically the scope of what you're talking about tonight. I think, to give my opinion, as a resident, you have every right to have the discussion you're having that's much broader. But as FinCom, you are only talking about the 7 million, yes or no? And what's the impact of the 7 million, yes or no? Certainly, there are secondary impacts, like, oh, if they go through with this, I'm going to also have to pay that interest rate. Sure. That's not what you're being asked tonight.
Okay, yeah, Bob, I, I understand what you're saying.
Can I finish? Lois, hold on.
Yeah, sure, sure.
From Bob, from Bob. If there was no article whatsoever today, would we, the taxpayers still have to pay an increase of 150, 160 dollars?
240.
240. So with no vote today by FinCom, we still have that money. I want to be, I want to be crystal clear. This is, this is not, Chris, not me talking about this, I want to be crystal clear in this report that we show that, that this is not part of this vote.
Yeah, Greg, Greg, I agree with you.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. I want to respond to that. We are the finance committee, and we're supposed to advise the town on finances and be fiscally If, let's make this simple. If you were building a house and you had known that you, wait a minute, just don't shake your head no.
I, I'm shaking my head because I.
Let me finish.
As Chris said, I abstain from any of this conversation. I just want to know that if we took no vote today, our taxes would still go up with no vote. That's all I wanted to clarify.
I, and I agree with you, and where I was going is, if, if you were building a house and you were committed to an X amount of money, and six months later, that X amount of money is costing you 250 dollars more a month, then you would think differently about adding more to your burden.
I, I, I get it. I understand, right? If the budget.
So it's, it's, it's a context.
But, but it's not, I want to make sure we say that it's not part of this vote. That money is spent.
I cannot, so.
No, wait, wait, Greg, it's spent when the borrowing takes.
I just want to finish my comment. For the purpose of being fully transparent and giving people the whole picture to make a decision, I cannot support not doing it.
If, if the school didn't, like I said, if the school didn't come with this, we would still face the increase as taxpayers. That, that's, that's what I want to get.
Thank you. Let's move on to other folks that want to join the discussion.
And Peggy, just because the question came up about the finance committee report. Greg, I get it. I understand. You're absolutely correct. And the finance committee report and those charts that Bob did, lay it out beautifully. It will make it clear what portion of the increase in the burden to the taxpayer is related to the vote. That will be clear. But Kathy's also right, that the fuller context needs to be presented, which is, which, so we, you're right, we need to focus on that part of the increase for purposes of this vote. You are absolutely right, and the report needs to make that clear, and it will. But the taxpayers also need to understand that the whole project has become more expensive with the town, not because of the need for the additional budget, but because of the interest rate change. So the taxpayers need to make their decision based with, having full information. But I promise you, the report will make it clear. The distinction you are drawing will be as clear as, as those of us that are going to be writing the report, it's not just me. We'll make it.
Thank you. Lois? One over there had their hand raised. Dee?
I'll go. I'm just wondering if we're being a little short sighted, because if we have the delays per these slides and incur another $10 million in costs, the tax impact on the, on the citizens is going to be the same, if not worse, and we've just shot ourselves in the foot with all kinds of delays and redesigns and whatnot. And I feel like we're really kind of veering from this 7.2 million dollar. kind of veering from this 7.2 million dollar vote, which is what we should be focused on, my opinion. And if we're, I'm not going to say my vote, but I'm ready to vote.
I, Dee, pass. Don, you're done? Lindsay, done? I, I. Rash? No, no one has their hand up. I will reiterate what I, what I said earlier when was called out for giving my opinion too soon.
Sorry.
I, I'm going to vote affirmative action on this project, and I'm sure that doesn't surprise anybody on the committee or anyone who's been following it. Um, I, this is going to be a 50 year building. Uh, the town has already voted 103 million and spent countless hours, including us. Um, that's not just, that's not a full reason, but uh, I think the 7 million increment and the impact it will have on taxpayers as compared to the school that it will yield. For many, many years, and believe we had these same lengthy discussions over each of the three middle, uh, elementary schools and of course, the high school. Um, and every time they were supported, uh, we wound up with a wonderful school and it was an investment in our future. Um, it's an investment in real estate values, it's an investment in our children. Um, the idea of people moving to town because they want to be in our schools is wonderful. We have a robust community with little kids, baseball leagues, soccer leagues, et cetera, where they're being shut down in other towns, which, because they just don't have the kids. It's not the community I want to live in, and I want to live in a community where people are supporting their schools, you are, your neighbor is, and um, I'm really bummed that it's costing another 7 million, no question. Um, and I'm, you know, obviously, the interest rate is a big factor, and hopefully that'll drop down. Uh, maybe even the bids will come in lower, who knows what's going on. Uh, but taking the really longer view, I'm, I am absolutely going to vote affirmative action on this project. So I put an A next to my name. Um, and open to further discussion, or we can, Shash, you have your hand up?
Yes. Uh, I think I do, you know, commend the building committee for what they have done so far, and I agree with Chris that the, there could have been more work done, but going back to when you have a schematic design and going through this process, it is a difficult process and tedious process to come to a conclusion, where do you stop, where do you start? Because it's a very moving target on the, especially with the market rates. I'll give you an example that happened in a town to be unnamed. That started with X dollars in a town meeting for a town, for a town hall. It got approved at the town meeting for X dollars, the first bids came in at 1.1X. And it failed to add the additional dollars. The committee went back, redesigned the school, the town hall, took a lot of stuff out of the town hall. It came back again at 1.1X, less the value taken out of all the spaces taken out. And then three years later, they went back, got it at 1.4X. And now they look back, as it's finished, they look back, wish they, they're glad that they did it because after COVID, that would have cost you 2X, so it's a question of where do you stop, where do you end, you know? And I think the additional 5 to 6 billion dollars now, whether you delayed and pay for it and get less is not a, you know, really a, I would say it's, it's not what you want to accept when you're doing it, but you have no choice doing it. So I'm going to go with the recommendation, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Sresh. Ray.
Yeah, I, um, couple thoughts, one is, uh, I agree that does feel like we're choosing between pay more now or pay more later for potentially less, does feel like, you know, uh, the timing is unfortunate, but that, that especially as manifested in the interest rate and the cost of materials, um, and even the cost of labor is a factor where we live and we're not able to change those things. I hope that we are, there are ways, uh, there certainly are, um, programs in town that, um, we can use to reduce the impact on citizens. Uh, that Dory mentioned, for instance, people who have to choose between meds and food or whatever, medicine, rent. Um, there are ways of, um, reducing people's taxes if you're a senior or on limited income. And I think I, I support this, uh, I vote for it even with the, um, a little less than enthusiasm, shall we say, uh, with, um, concerns about the fact that we didn't dig deep enough, or not we, but, uh, that the, uh, building committee made decisions to not, um, do a, um, look at some of the bigger items. It does feel like the, the, uh, well, anyway, I won't, I'm repeating things that Dean and Chris mentioned. Um, anyway, I would vote a favor, uh, affirmative.
Thank you, Ray. Do people want to continue speaking their points, or should we just raise our hands? I don't want to cut anyone off.
I'd like, I'd like to just, um, ask one thing, are we voting tonight or are we not voting tonight?
We're voting tonight.
We're going to vote.
We voted to vote.
Okay.
Peggy, I think Eric has his hand up.
There, there is already a motion on the floor which was seconded, by the way.
There was, uh, there's a motion on the floor to vote affirmative action on Article 5 as printed in the warrant.
And there was a second?
And there was a second. So we are in discussion.
I was the second.
Yep, I think, Perashar, you make the motion, um, Eric?
Um, I, so I, I've been conflicted on this, I've truly gone back and forth on this a few times. Uh, but I think this, this hearing tonight and the subsequent discussion has been really helpful for me in putting things into perspective. Um, and what I, what I keep going back to in my mind is, I got to yes on the original authorization a lot faster, um, uh, both as a member of the finance committee and as a voter myself, um, than I have on this. I've spent just personally way more time, uh, weighing the pros and cons of this than the original 102.8 million. Um, we all agree we need a new middle school and, um, I, John, um, I, I really am, am swayed by the way John articulated it. Forcing further redesign, if this fails, would end up just driving further delays, and it's going to cost us a not insignificant amount of money in the long run. Anyway, it's not like, you know, we're not on easy street if that happens. So while I, I do have issues with the process and how we got here, I think we all do. Um, I'm ready to vote, um, to recommend approval.
Thank you, Eric.
I have something to say. So, so if we had this kind of a problem with whatever it was, a $5 million issue due to inflation, what will happen when we have other problems on the project? So if we do come in higher at bid and we have to redesign, or there are other issues, let's say we don't, let's say it goes through and we have, you know, the bids come in okay. There will be other issues that cause additional cost, every project has them, whatever they're going to be. We do have some contingencies for that. But I think the process is really important. And I don't like being pushed into a corner and saying, there's no choice. Because we are where you're, where we are, you know, you've got to do this because it's going to cost us more not to do it. To me, that's sort of this sunk cost fallacy, I don't agree with that. I think projects get to be reevaluated where they are, and you still have to look to see are the costs and benefits the same. So I think people have to look at what the current costs are and say to themselves, yes, I want to keep doing this or not. But from a process perspective, my concern is the entrusting of this, this, this large amount of funds with a process around changes that was very limited, purposely limited, to avoid what they called the sacred cows, and I'm not talking about the environmental rights. So I think that's where I'm very concerned, that the rigidity of the approach to solve the 5 million will occur again and again, and we won't be able to deliver it. And so I'm willing to say no. No. So that, that's where I am, and that's who my thoughts are on the, on the sunk cost.
Okay, anyone else want to join the discussion, or should we move to the vote? Vote? Okay, going to do a roll call on this one. Uh, Ray.
Um, aye.
Sresh?
Aye.
Peggy?
Aye.
Kathy? Eric?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Amrit?
Uh, no.
Don?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Dee?
Yes.
Perashar?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
Brian?
Yes.
And Lois?
Nobody wants pizza on Monday, huh?
Or, look, we haven't even started guidelines, so we'll do that.
Okay, I know. Yes.
Thank you, Lois, okay.
With reservations, but yes.
Yes, the ayes have it, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 12 aye. And 1, 2, 3, nay. For 15, I really appreciate all members, um, being here tonight, so we have a full turnout.
Peggy, hold on, hold on. Um, so Chris, I have abstained from any conversation, Chris, I think is questioning my vote, so if you.
We don't need it.
We, we, we have discussed this, you know, in email and stuff, so if you want to strike it as an abstention, that is fine. I just heard you calling me and thought you wanted.
I can, I'll, I'll put you down as a, a pass, okay?
Thank you, Greg.
So we have 11 aye, 1, uh, pass, I guess. For 15, I appreciate this committee being here, we are still going to do a little guideline work. We also have in our audience, I think way over there, the Minuteman, middle, uh, Minuteman folks, so we've still got quite a bit of work to do, it's 10:30. Um. Really. Very, um, you know, robust and excellent discussion, thank you. Someone called my name?
Peggy, I was just going to ask, um, it is 10:30 right now. Um, we were going to beam on Monday, should we table some of this for Monday?
I was, thank you for that recommendation, I don't know who's talking.
It's Brian.
I am looking, I am actually looking at the, um, looking at poor Lori in the front row here, who's ready to go through her guidelines. Um, I do think we are going to have to table some of the guideline discussion for Monday and keep that meeting. Um, that said, I would like to hear from the Minuteman folks who have sat through our extensive discussion. Uh, but before we do that, let's take a five minute break. Two minute, two minute break. All right, everybody. Can everybody hear me? We're going to get going again. What? I didn't know where you were going to go.
I know.
Fun that way, right?
What I was hoping for is that those. Not the 19, 20 students for classroom, instead of 19. And then you'll be at 19 and 10.
You know, when the bids, the estimate came in.
Yeah.
Welcome to the committee.
We're going to go.
Peggy? Peggy?
Okay, you guys.
Peggy?
Everybody, please, take their seat. Everybody, please take their seat, um. Steve Ledoux is going to introduce our speaker from the Minuteman High School. Um, she has been here all night, and I think she senses the feeling of the crowd in terms of how long her speech will be. It's more than half the, um, slides I have on my desk, but I think we can, um, whip through them pretty quickly. I've asked her to focus on, um, oh, yes, okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Perashar, okay. Um, thank you, Chris. And Lori, you'll think of us in just a moment, except you have to come back on Monday. Um, we're going to, we're letting you go tonight. What? I, I, it's, it's 10, it's 10:30, we're thinking of doing the, the town, school, town and school guidelines on Monday. Yeah, okay.
I make a motion to vote on the guidelines.
Da-dum, ba-dum. Yeah, no one wants to be not present. Okay, Steve.
Not sure yet, it's past my bedtime, that much I know. Uh, I'm, I'm Steve Ledoux.
It's still the 17th, so we don't have to call a meeting for the 18th yet.
Okay, I'm Steve Ledoux, 89 Heat's Bridge Road, I am the Concord representative to the Minuteman, um, school district. I am currently the, the vice chair of the committee, chair of the budget, uh, subcommittee, and also, uh, chair of the, uh, union negotiation subcommittee. And I wanted to just take a, a brief moment to introduce our new school, school superintendent, Dr. Kathleen Dawson. As you know, Dr. Edward Colan retired, uh, this past June, uh, after 14 years of service, and, um, uh, the Minuteman School Committee went on a nationwide search and, uh, uh, we, uh, appointed, uh, Dr. Dawson. Dr. Dawson, it's interesting because we represent nine different communities, nine, uh, you know, very different communities, yet our first take of a straw poll after interviews, we unanimously all agreed that Dr. Dawson was the person to, uh, lead Minuteman, uh, in the future. And just a very brief background, she, she came to us from Orange County, North Carolina, where she was the, um, deputy, um, deputy, uh, school superintendent for, uh, a district of about 7,500. She has, uh, say has worked for the Nashville, uh, Tennessee, uh, school district. Uh, close at her home, uh, she has been the, uh, principal of New Bedford High School, and I think worked for the city of Boston school system for about 14 years, I think. So just like to present Dr. Dawson, and we do have our, uh, assistant superintendent for operations, Rich Eikonen, and our business manager, Nikki Andrade, uh, available via Zoom if there's any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledoux. Good evening, Chair Briggs, committee members, Superintendent Hunter, and, um, committee members, community members. Um, we are very proud to serve the high school students and families of Concord. We pride ourselves in providing our students access to quality career and technical education and preparing every student for college and or career of their choice, meeting the dire needs of our industry and our economy. And so I, I know that, um, the evening is. And so I know that the evening is late. I really appreciated the conversation and the hard work that everyone puts into what's in the best interest for our students and their families. So this evening, we just wanted to provide a quick update on our Concord Finance Committee Minuteman report. And we're going to go through these slides rather quickly, and they've been presented to you, but we do want to highlight just a couple, couple items. And that's our shift in enrollment. So I'm going to ask Chris, as I'm speaking, for him to just kind of go through the slides so you see what has been presented. And of course, any questions that may follow, we'll be able to answer. But there has been a shift in our enrollment that we're very happy to share with you. Prior to our building being open, we had more out-of-district students than in-district. We're proud to say that this was the first year in a number of years that our incoming freshmen were all from our nine town members. So that is a change. And so as we know that this does impact our revenue as well as offsetting our, our member assessments, because as our student enrollment from out-of-district town members decreases, that means that our revenue source from that enrollment will also decrease. And so going to our enrollment, current enrollment on slide 17, Chris, I do want to make a correction because when you see our Concord students, 18, 855, that's actually in reverse order. So please pardon us for that. You know, as a math teacher, we go one way, and then finances, sometimes we go the other way, but it's actually the opposite in that we went from five in 20, of our class of 2023, to five, and then eight, and then currently 18 students. And as of November 13th, for next year's incoming class, we already have seven applicants, which is a little bit higher at this time of the year than in the past. And we actually had a strong number. So thank you, Superintendent Hunter, for sending over 25 of the middle school students on our showcase day. So thank you for that. So that's kind of where we are in our current enrollment. And the impact of that on per pupil assessment on page 20.
I just ask a question.
Of course.
Back to that. All the numbers reverse or only?
No, I'm sorry, just the bottom row, 18, 855, yes. So please pardon us for that reversal. And then on slide 20, you'll see that our FY23 per pupil assessment was comparable to our FY22. So Concord for FY23, we were right about 31,000, if we're rounding up. And then FY22, we were right about 34. So just a couple thousand dollar difference. And it's a little bit too early yet to have, you know, our estimates for FY24. As we're currently working on those numbers now, we hope to have a little bit more information after our December finance committee meeting. So I'm going to stop there just because of time. If there are any other questions, I know that, I know you all had a chance to review this.
You have, you are more than half an hour shorter than the previous superintendent.
Well, I was prepped, you know, they told me, they give you 30, but you have five. So I was, I was prepared.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, could you tell us, what are your new programs this year? Did you introduce any new programs?
So this year, we were not, we didn't add any, but we did expand into our second year of the animal science program. So, and we will continue to grow that out till it's fully expanded to 9 through 12. And then we are taking a look for, at how can we more specialize in our computer science areas to be more specific. But we haven't added those yet.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Chris?
Me?
Did you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. Welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, and I'm a big fan of Minuteman. So thank you so much for your patience in leading us tonight. On the, so on the budget, so you're not done yet essentially with FY24 budget? And you'll have that sometime in December, but I assume we're not going down?
You're assuming correct.
Okay, okay. So last year, we had a fairly significant bump. I think it was, am I right? It was 10? It was somewhere, it was a reasonably large bump last year. We had, whether it was debt service, or we also had a growth in enrollment. And so that, that probably was the biggest driver. So do you have any sense of where we're going? Because that's, that's what really I'm interested in, is sort of what's the number going to look like?
I don't want to give a number yet because that is too preliminary, but you know, a couple of things that will impact, right? We are starting our contract negotiations with our staff. So we do expect something there, especially with inflation and all of that. With enrollment increase also requires additional staffing to support. So there is that. And then of course, again, and I know this, you've heard this in prior years, that as our out-of-district enrollment decreases, our revenue from that also decreases. So those are some of the bigger drivers that will be impacting. But again, of course, we will strive to be fiscally, you know, prudent and do our best to be as, you know, efficient with our budgeting as possible.
That's good. Well, we'll look forward to hearing what the number is, and we see the assessment. Two, two other questions. So on OPEB, one of the discussions that we've had in Concord is around whether there's going to be an attempt to go back to the towns that exited to say, hey, you had some accumulated obligation here. You don't just get to walk on it. Is there, we've had that conversation with the former superintendent. Is there anything happening on that?
So I'm going to, yep, ask, Mr. Ledoux.
We, we did, you know, Christine, based on that discussion last year, talked to district council about that. And there's really no mechanism to do that unless there'd be like a special act or something like that. So there's nothing much we, we can do about that. And you know, frankly, a lot of the towns have pulled out, themselves have done nothing about OPEB. So to try to convince them OPEB's a good thing is a little, little tough. But it's a good idea. I just don't think, you know, based on what district council said, that it's, it's, it's going to, would be an easy thing or even, even a possible thing to do.
Yep. I presume though, if anybody else pulls out in the future, that would definitely be in the discussion.
Yeah, and I think the interesting thing is too, is, and it's kind of early to talk about this, but there are a couple of towns that have indicated they may want to join the district. And then that leads to the question of not really necessarily OPEB, but is there like a capital entrance fee to, you know, to pay off, you know, some of the debt that's out there as well?
Yep, thank you.
Parrishar?
Aye. Welcome.
Thank you.
Did you move to North Carolina and then come back? Or did you come from North Carolina and stayed?
So I left Boston, did a little tour, Tennessee, North Carolina, and now I'm back home.
There you go. I think a year or two years ago, there was some discussion about renting out the gym and the athletic facilities to community, or how is that going?
So yes, especially now after COVID, this year, we have had an uptick and an increase in rental facilities. So we are actually working on breaking down which of our fields or our rooms, you know, theater, have we been renting out? And how much revenue have we been bringing in in those different, you know, locations? So we can report that back to you. But that has increased, and so that is also helping to bring in some revenue. And like Mr. Ledoux is saying, we're also continuing to explore ways in which we can increase revenue and then of course, for our towns to decrease.
If, it would be great if you can just send us a sense of what that's looking like because there may be a new facility opening up in town in a few years, and it might be useful to have some lessons learned. Not gonna. Just saying, all right? What, leave the auditorium up?
Any other questions? Anyone up online? I see Ray is still here. Suresh? No further questions?
I have one. You're new to the job. And I wonder how, what kind of challenges do you think you're going to be faced with this year?
What kind of challenges?
Maybe none, right?
Well, I think, you know, one that we've, we have been exploring, right? We do understand the impact on our towns as, you know, revenue is decreasing. And, you know, just really working to try to be as efficient and as innovative as we can be to try to, you know, help keep the costs at, and increase at a minimum. So we are working to do that because we do understand that, you know, this is impacting all of our towns, right? Not just schools. So we are, that, that is a challenge we are continuing to explore. And then I think, you know, with, anytime that there's change, change is difficult, how small, how big. And so it's just really being mindful of the ramifications of any level of change to first and foremost, our students and our staff, just to be very mindful of that. And, and you just be mindful that not just our students, but our adults have been impacted by the pandemic. And so just taking good care of our people, you know? So that's something that I know that has been on my mind as incoming new superintendent. So I don't think of that maybe not necessarily as a challenge, but something that we need to be very mindful of because it has impacted us all.
Thank you, and best of luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying until 11 o'clock.
Yes.
I already asked on Zoom, no one has their hand up? I don't think anyone's left.
And I do want to thank my team members, my assistant superintendent of operations of facilities, I'm a business manager for sticking in there with me and.
Excellent.
And they've, they did a lot of this work, so I just want to share my appreciation of them.
Well, I did look through all your slides, as you know, because I emailed you which ones to focus on.
Yes.
Which I also emailed the board, so everybody could, you know, be, be aware of what we're going to cover. And I didn't think it would be this late.
And if it's okay with you, because I, I, I'll send you the ones with the numbers that are not reversed, so.
Sure, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Just send those to Bob. Okay, thank you. So our next question is whether we want to continue on guidelines. Lori, do you want to give us a sense of your availability?
Availability? I'm not sure I can be here.
Okay.
And we haven't finished, so all we have is a very, very.
On December 6th. So should we get the brief update and then just defer the rest of the guideline discussion till there's more detail?
Do we have to, when do we have to vote? What's our deadline? What's our deadline?
Guidelines, I think. Remember, I thought it was like before, like.
Our deadline is November 30th? And that's for final guidelines?
Do you want to give us just a brief update? I think I did send around your, I sent around your heads up, so folks saw that.
Okay, good. And Bob's here, obviously, too. He can hop in at any point.
Your Bob, not our Bob.
My Bob, yeah. We just wanted to be sure, especially at the CPS side. Last time we brought you projections, we had looked at the high school side and could see some increase in special education we wanted to bring to your attention. The same patterns playing out at CPS, literally, things are changing pretty daily. Our in-house programs are really almost to capacity in many cases. The good news there is we're not sending those kids out of districts, so we're saving. But we are struggling with what to do with the capacity, and could that result in some out-of-district placements? It could. And we're just seeing kids starting to hit, the novelty of school is over, the impacts of all the stressors of the last few years. I think it's just all catching up with us. We're, I was with 30 other superintendents the other day, and the same stories were being told. And I will just say, we're very lucky to be part of Minuteman. The building is driving a lot of enrollments there, and the, the other districts without membership can't get in. And that means they're looking for other folks to, to work with and paying out of district tuition. So kudos to Minuteman and what they're doing. It's really drawing some great things and actually serving kids with different needs that sometimes we don't serve exactly the same way. So, but in terms of special ed at CPS, we are struggling with how that's going to impact the budget. We've been working really hard this week on the CPS budget. And right now, we're projecting, we're going to be somewhere around 5% coming to the school committee December 6th. We won't stop there, obviously. We'll be continuing to work, but that's a little higher than we anticipated originally. Two other factors I want to note that are more fiscal than student service. One is the state approved a 14% increase to private special education placements. So both budgets are going to have to absorb that projected increase, which the superintendents association is about to lobby really hard about why that was allowed and how the impacts are trickling down. The second part, especially at CPS, we've had significant savings in out-of-district tuitions last years. So we've been able to realize actually reducing the number by hundreds of thousands. We've leveled off now, so you're not, we're not getting that fiscal savings this year because we've kept the kids in and we don't have as many to return to us. So the savings is that they never left. So we're definitely going to see that impact the budget as well. We were, the last two to three years, bringing in $100,000 to $200,000 of kids returning to district. They've returned for the most part, and now only one's going out of the ones really in that level of need. So that's having impact, too. But we just wanted to give you a highlight. We're, we're hovering at 5% right now, and that's higher than we told you last time we were here, so. You want to add to that?
Preliminary number was 2 and 1/2.
You need the mic.
Would you, would we be offering them?
So we're budgeting what we know and where we are. The, there are, Lori mentioned the 14% private school tuition out-of-district increase. There's been communications from superintendents across the state to, to Department of Elementary, secondary ed. We can't factor that into the budget now. We're hoping that there'll be more relief. They either raise the circuit breaker level, or they provide some supplemental funding. But until we see that, it would be not intelligent for us to factor that in and then have to cut somewhere else. So that's something we're hopeful of, but it's not reflected in the numbers. Utility costs are going up as well, that's another driver. We also took some, we were, made some aggressive assumptions last year to, you know, hopeful that, that certain things would happen in terms of retirements and use of some of the reserves we've had. We have ester funds also declining. So we're kind of at a point where we can't reach into some safety nets that we've had in the past. If we find opportunities to do that, we will. And those are things we'll keep looking at. But that's, that's where we are now, and we wanted to bring forward a realistic picture of where we are. But again, you know, we're not going to stop working on it.
What's the dollar amount associated with that 17% or 14% basically surcharge on the private schools?
So.
It's about 150 at CPS and over 300,000 at the high school.
Okay, wow.
Depending on the placement, and if you're in a residential placement, and 14% of 200,000 is a lot of money. Add up quickly.
Yep, okay.
Basically, just want to make sure that we're ready for Monday, because you guys won't be here. Rob, will you be here Monday?
If you, why don't you set your meeting and let us know exactly?
Okay. So, so right now, just, excuse me, back of the envelope, relative to the October 13th number estimate, 5% increase would be about a $290,000 increase relative to mid-October. Is that roughly right? That gets us to 5%?
Yeah, 1% is 430,000 on our $43 million budget. So if we're at 4.3, it's 0.7 of 430,000.
Okay, so I got 290 to get to 5, okay. So just so that all of us know, right? When we set the preliminary guidelines back in October, we were, the school CPS was faced with basically a, let's see, 787, $787,000 shortfall. That was in the spreadsheet that you guys got. So now we're talking another 290 on top of that, basically. So now we're talking another 290 on top of that, basically. So over a million, almost 1.1 million, just so everybody's got a sense of context.
Yeah.
Peggy, Peggy, you can think about it. We can talk about it over pizza.
Dr. Hunter, at the high school, last year, we had a much better answer there, right? There was less than they, is that, is that gonna recur?
Yeah, so there's some different things happening at the high school, again, mostly special education related. We have four kids aging in from Carlisle. We've had four aging up from Concord, so there's eight out-of-district placements for the high school to absorb. We've had some move-ins, and we have a couple, a few kids with significant crises and needing residential, so it's all of that plus the 14%. So...
I'm just gonna ask...
That said, I'll just remind you, Carlisle's got the bigger assessment shift, so everything to you on the high school side is marginal impact because of that? Yeah.
So I want to go back and just kind of link a little bit of what's happening here to the discussion around the middle school. What we've seen because of conscious decision to basically bring some of the special education in-house, which was good, I guess, we're seeing more students coming from out-of-district, is that right, over the years?
That's saving you money, though.
I understand. No, no, we're keeping our kids in here, which is saving us money.
The move-in, the move-in.
Right, but are we, not even, but don't, but don't parents have a choice of sending their kids into Concord even though they don't live in Concord?
No.
Oh.
We are not a school choice district.
We're not, okay, thank you.
No, when I say out-of-district, that means we can't service, meet their special education needs, and they go to either a public...
But they can't come in here.
We don't accept kids from other districts in that way.
They gotta buy or rent?
Yeah, the only exception is staff have that right in the contract to have their children enroll, but that's nominal.
And you refer to that as a move-in?
Well, I, when I say move-in, usually it's referring to a special education placement that another district set up, and we inherit the IEP and a plan that we have to facilitate, and we own the cost, and usually that's because kids really need to be wherever they are, and the community has just...
Families move into town.
Yeah, they do move into town and then...
There's no waiting period or anything like that?
No, no. There's a small, there's a window in the school year once you're already into the budget if they move after April 1st, do I have that right? If they move in after April 1st, the preceding district will still own the tuition because the assumption is they budgeted for it.
Right, okay.
So that means there's only that April to June window when it doesn't impact us, so.
Okay.
And it could mean someone leaves us April 15th, and we pay the tuition for the rest of the year, so. All right, so let us know the plan for Monday, we'll figure out how to have someone here.
Okay. Sounds good. We gonna be talking to Carrie about the town tonight or anything?
Look at my colleagues' faces, isn't it?
Someone wants to make a motion to adjourn, I'll listen, I'm listening.
Carrie, you weren't gonna say something?
Are you here on?
Motion, we motion to adjourn? Motion adjourn.
Accepted. Second. Somebody needs a second. The beauty of being chairs, you can't make a motion or second. Did you know that? Roberts rules. And when you only have five people on your board, it can get pretty interesting. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for such a...